Good evening. I am Scott Pierce. I'm the Director of the Maui Space Surveillance Center. I'm the son of Jeff and Diane Pierce. And I welcome those who attended yesterday. Those who are coming and joining us again today, please welcome. I have been living in Bukalani for the last five years, and I really appreciate you all coming this evening. You'll notice if you were here yesterday that there are a few minor changes. We heard some of your feedback, and we wanted to make sure we adjusted accordingly. And you'll probably notice those if you were here yesterday or at the Kahului site. We'd like to begin the evening with pule. I'd like to invite Uncle, if you'd like to come forward and offer pule for the proceedings.
Oh, thank you for raising everyone. Oh, this water kilikili is really nice. Cool off the ground, waters the plants, comes from heaven. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for being here tonight. Oftentimes, we don't know why we do what we do, and how we do what we do, and when we do what we do, but you know exactly what has to be done. Give us peace tonight. Give us understanding. There are more than one side to the story, and we want to hear all of them. We want to hear everybody's manao. Bless this time in Jesus' name, amen.
There's a couple of housekeeping items. The restrooms are located in the back where you see an exit sign. There's the women's and men's restroom. There's some refreshments if you feel like you have a need for them in the back. If it gets too hot in here, unlikely, you can step outside. Of course, there's exits on both sides of the building in any emergency. If you sign in at the entrance, you also have a chance to sign up to speak. At the last count that I heard, there's 37 people currently signed up. Last night, we got through 37 people within two and a half hours. So we've slotted two hours again this evening. So the likelihood of getting as many people as possible is still a goal, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. If you have signed up, you should have a sticker with a number on it. I'll be calling people forward with numbers when we get to that point. I'd like to also introduce Molly Thrash. She's from the Air Force Civil Engineering Center, the Program Manager for this program, and Lieutenant Colonel Philip Wagenbach, who is the Spitting Space Surveillance Squadron Commander, which you'll hear from him this evening. The purpose of this forum is to gather community comments on the Small Telescope Advanced Research Site Draft Environmental Impact Statement. The period for comments opened in late April and will continue through 7 June. These forums are one avenue in which you can provide comments to the Department of the Air Force regarding the proposed action listed in that Notice of Intent. That can be found at the amostareis.com website. Some of the material posted on the website can be found in the banners in the back, and you're welcome to see them throughout the evening if you haven't already had a chance to do so. I will repeat what I said yesterday, which is, "We want to hear from as many people as possible." And I'll say that in a couple of different ways, because we want to hear from as many people as possible. We want to hear from as many people as possible, and we want to hear from as many people as possible because your voices are important to us, your concerns, the impact that you see of this site to the island and to the mountain are important to us, and we provide this opportunity and this forum for you to do so. To maximize the number of people that can speak tonight, we will try to adhere to some guidelines later that I'll describe. Keep your comments concise if possible and allow as many people to speak as possible. So I'd like to introduce now Colonel Wagenbach at the Commander of Spitting Space Surveillance Squadron.
Awesome, thank you. All right, well, welcome to the scoping sessions tonight. We're really pleased with the turnout. A really excellent group that has come out tonight to provide or to receive the information that we are going to provide tonight and that also then have a chance to provide your comments to us about the proposed project. I am originally from Wisconsin. I've been serving in the military since about 17 years. Over the course, my family and I have had five different duty stations, and so I consider myself very fortunate to be able to see a lot of places but never actually feel like we're from any one of those places for very long. And so we've had a really good opportunity to live in different locations and experience the breadth of culture and the breadth of different peoples that we've had the opportunity to live in the different communities of across California, New Mexico, Virginia, Alabama, and Hawaii. Been fortunate enough to live on Maui since July of 2020 and was considerably fortunate to get selected to command this unit, the 15th Space Surveillance Squadron. Our job is incredibly important to keep tabs of what's going on in space over this mountain and some of the other remote sites that operate and to characterize those objects so that they can provide to everyone that uses space assets, whether that's timing, communications, weather, all of those capabilities are available to help your life be easier. It's a very important job, and I couldn't be prouder of the team as we execute that mission day in and day out. So for tonight, I'll just reiterate, we do really want to hear from as many people as possible. We do value all this feedback. I know the community has been through many, many of these sessions, and so I understand that that can get very tedious and tiresome. However, as we've pointed out here, this is something we want to do. It's also something we have to do. And so we appreciate the passion. We appreciate the feedback that you're providing to us on this proposal. I also want to reiterate that no decisions have been made. This is a proposal. This is a proposed project. No decisions have been made. No decisions will be made tonight. This is all part of this longer process. So please welcome your comments. Please sign up in the back if you want to speak, and please make sure that you can articulate your comments. And if you can't get through all of it in three minutes with a verbal presentation, we do have the website open until 7 June.
Thank you, sir. For those who are in the back, is there any issue hearing thus far? Thank you. So I was embarrassed yesterday when we played a video that mispronounced the name Haleakala. That was my mistake for not appropriately reviewing the audio portion of that thing, so I apologize for any disrespect that it showed. And as such, I want to relate the material from that script in lieu of playing that audio again. So you may have to hear my voice a little longer than you may be expecting. Welcome to the scoping meeting for the Environmental Impact Statement for the Proposed Air Force Maui Optical and Supercomputing Site Small Telescope Advanced Research, or AMOSS Star Facility on Maui. Next slide. This is one of three scoping meetings being held this week. The meetings are being held in Kahului on the 13th, Bukalani on the 14th, Kihei on the 15th. Please be sure to sign in if you have not done so and indicate if you plan to make oral comments this evening. Following the presentation, we will have time for a few clarifying questions about the information provided, after which the oral comment period will begin. The oral comment portion of the meeting will be recorded to ensure that your comments and concerns are accurately captured. If, after viewing the presentation, you decide you would like to make a comment at the microphone, you will be able to sign up at the registration desk at any time before 8:45 PM. Next slide. Signed into law by President Nixon in 1970, the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, requires federal agencies to assess and disclose the environmental effects of their proposed major federal actions prior to decisions being made on whether and how to proceed. As our basic national environmental charter, NEPA established federal policy for protecting the environment, set goals, and provided the means for carrying out that policy. NEPA promotes a more informed agency decision-making by ensuring that high-quality environmental information is available to agency officials and the public before the agency decides whether and how to undertake a major federal action. An Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, is the most detailed level of analyses prepared under NEPA. The Department of the Air Force intends to prepare an EIS for the proposed AMOSS Star Facility that you will learn more about this evening. Next slide. The state of Hawaii has requirements similar to NEPA known as the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, or HEPA, which can be found in Chapter 343 of the Hawaii Revised Statutes and Environmental Impact Statement Rules, which are detailed in Hawaii Administrative Rules Title 11, Chapter 200.1. HEPA is triggered because the proposed AMOSS Star Facility would involve the use of state and county lands managed by the University of Hawaii and involve the use of lands within the state conservation district. HRS Chapter 343 allows for draft and final federal EIS documents to be submitted in compliance with HEPA if the federal EIS satisfies the content requirements identified in the statute, including addressing potential cultural resources impacts. AMOSS Star EIS will satisfy HEPA content requirements as well as NEPA requirements in accordance with NEPA regulations that provide a mechanism to reduce duplication between NEPA and comparable state requirements. Next slide. NEPA and HEPA provide meaningful opportunities for agencies, organizations, and the public to provide input on the scope of an EIS before it is drafted and the merits of the analysis on an EIS once it is drafted. The first opportunity is the activity in which you are participating now, called the scoping period. Scoping is part of the NEPA and HEPA process during which the proponent agency, in this case, the Department of the Air Force, seeks input from other agencies, organizations, and the public on potentially affected resources, available data and information, environmental issues to be considered, and the agency's planned approach to analysis. Scoping begins with publication of the Notice of Intent in the Federal Register under NEPA and publication of an Environmental Impact Statement Preparation Notice, EIS PN, titled "The Environmental Notice: The Periodic Bulletin of Hawaii's Environmental Review Program" under HEPA. You can provide comments and information in several ways during the 45-day scoping period, which we will go over toward the end of the presentation. The next opportunity is when the draft EIS is published. When an agency publishes a draft EIS, the public has 45 days to comment on the document. The draft EIS public comment period begins with publication of the Notice of Availability in the Federal Register under the NEPA and the Environmental Notice under the HEPA. All substantive comments will be addressed in the final EIS. When a federal agency publishes a final EIS, there is a minimum 30-day waiting period before it can make a final decision on the proposed project. Once the waiting period has ended, the agency documents its decision in the Record of Decision. The portion of an action that triggered HEPA can be initiated once the final EIS has been approved by the state agency with accepting authority. Next slide. The National Historic Preservation Act is intended to protect and preserve historical and cultural sites within the U.S. under the Act. Under the Act, federal agencies act as stewards of historic properties owned by the federal government or affected by its actions. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act requires federal agencies to consider the effects of their actions or undertakings on historic properties. Agencies must provide the State Historic Preservation Division, Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, and other stakeholders, including native Hawaiian organizations and the public, an opportunity to comment on the undertaking prior to the agency making a final decision. A historic property is any prehistoric or historic district, site, building, structure, or object that is eligible for listing or already is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. Historic properties can include properties of traditional religious and cultural significance to the native Hawaiians and other stakeholders and are commonly referred to in Hawaii as traditional cultural properties, or TCPs. Consultation is the cornerstone of the Section 108 process initiated in the early stages of project planning. The federal agency seeks, discusses, and considers the views of other interested parties, and where feasible, seeks agreement with them regarding matters arising out of the Section 108 process. Federal agencies identify historic properties and assess the effect of an undertaking on those properties in consultation with knowledgeable consulting parties. Next slide. The Department of the Air Force is preparing an EIS to analyze the potential effects on the human and natural environments of constructing and operating the proposed AMOSS Star Facility. The project proponent is the 15th Space Surveillance Squadron. The proposed facility would be constructed near the Department of the Air Force's Maui Space Surveillance Complex, or MSSC, on Haleakala, on the island of Maui, Hawaii. The facility would consist of as many as seven telescopes enclosed in domes. Six would be ground-mounted, and the seventh would be mounted on the roof of an existing building on the project site. The interior of the building would be renovated to accommodate an optical laboratory and be used for communications equipment and storage. The AMOSS Star Facility would be connected to and operated primarily remotely from the MSSC and other Department of the Air Force sites on Maui. The facility would require installation of new utilities, a paved access drive, and a few parking spaces, surface water runoff management measures, and other site improvements. A utility easement between the MSSC and the proposed AMOSS Star Facility would involve the use of state or county lands and of land within the state conservation district. The state land on which the utility corridor is proposed is part of the Haleakala High Altitude Observatory that is managed and operated by the University of Hawaii. Once operational, Department of the Air Force and contractor personnel would access the site to perform calibration and maintenance activities. Next slide. The purpose of the AMOSS Star Facility is to provide dedicated satellite tracking and communication capability to allow the characterization, cataloging, and tracking of objects in space and to enable advanced research that expands the Department of the Air Force's understanding of objects in the Pacific Theater. The Department of the Air Force needs to expand the capabilities of AMOSS regarding space domain awareness. To expand this capability, additional telescopes need to be located at a site where there are favorable viewing conditions for observing objects in space in the Pacific Theater. Additionally, the 15th Space Surveillance Squadron must be able to readily provide operational control and support to the additional telescopes. Next slide. The proposed project site is a little less than one acre and was part of a larger site set aside for the precursor to the Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, by Hawaii's governor in 1957. The proposed project site is developed and has been used by the FAA and other federal entities since the 1950s for tracking and observation missions. Next slide. The proposed AMOSS Star site is abutted to the north and the east by the Haleakala High Altitude Observatory, which includes the MSSC and other observation facilities. The developed area to the south includes two FAA remote communication air-to-ground towers with supporting infrastructure and another tower operated by the U.S. Coast Guard. To the west and northwest is undeveloped state land. Next slide. At present, the Department of the Air Force has identified three alternatives to be carried forward for full analysis in the EIS. Alternatives 1 and 2 are described in more detail on the next slides. The no-action alternative would be exactly that. The Department of the Air Force would not construct the AMOSS Star Facility. An existing building on the site, Building 1010, would continue to be used as storage for the MSSC, and all existing operations would continue. However, the Building 1010 would not be renovated to accommodate an optics laboratory, and no telescopes would be constructed. A no-action alternative serves as a benchmark against which alternatives 1 and 2 will be assessed. Next slide. Under Alternative 1, six ground-mounted domed telescopes, star 1 through 6, would be assembled onsite and mounted on new concrete pads. Building 1010 would be renovated to structurally support a roof-mounted domed telescope, star 7, accommodate an optics laboratory, and house communications equipment. The telescope domes would range in diameter from about 10 and 1/2 feet to 33 feet and in overall height from 12 feet to 35 feet. Utilities would be run from the MSSC, requiring an easement from the University of Hawaii. A paved access drive and parking area for a few vehicles would be constructed. Curbing would be constructed to direct stormwater away from structures and to existing drainage swells. Construction staging would occur within the AMOSS Star site or a paved portion of the MSSC. Full project build-out would take about two years. Once operational, the facility would be visited only by the Department of the Air Force employees and contractors to conduct calibration and maintenance activities. This is the preferred alternative. Next slide. Alternative 2 would be identical to alternative 1 except for the proposed use of Building 1010. It would be renovated and used for communications equipment but not for an optics laboratory or to support a roof-mounted dome telescope, star 7, as with alternative 1. The facility would have only the six ground-mounted telescopes, stars 1 through 6. Next slide. The AMOSS Star telescope domes would be small relative to the size of the existing telescope domes within the Haleakala High Altitude Observatory property. The largest of the proposed ground-mounted telescope domes, star 1, would be approximately 33 feet in diameter and 30 feet high. Star 2 and 3 would be about 30 feet in diameter and 27 feet in height. Star 4 and 5 would be about 22 feet in diameter and 20 feet in height. Star 6 would be about 10.5 feet in diameter and 12 feet high. Star 7, the proposed rooftop-mounted telescope in the preferred alternative, would be approximately 22.5 feet in diameter and 35 feet high from the base of Building 1010 to the top of the dome. Next slide. The proposed AMOSS Star telescopes, shown in green, are small in scale when compared to many of the other telescopes on Haleakala. The largest of the proposed telescope domes, star 1, is about 61% smaller in diameter and 79% shorter in height than the domes that houses the Daniel K. Inouye Solar Telescope, 66% smaller in diameter and about 70% shorter in height than the Department of the Air Force's Advanced Electro-Optics Whole System Telescope Dome, and about 30% smaller in diameter and height than the largest of the telescope domes the Department of the Air Force has at the MSSC. All height comparisons are based on the total height from the ground to the top of the dome. The EIS will include a visual impact statement assessment. Next slide. The Environmental Impact Statement will assess the proposed impacts the AMOSS Star Facility, if constructed, would have on the human and natural environments. The Environmental Impact Statement will assess the project's potential for direct, indirect, and cumulative effects on air quality, airspace use and management, biological resources, cultural resources, geology, and soils. Next slide. Hazardous materials and waste management, health and safety, land use, noise, and socioeconomics. Next slide. Transportation and traffic, utilities and infrastructure, visual resources, and water resources. The level of analysis for each resource area will be commensurate with the potential for adverse effects. Mitigation measures to avoid or reduce potentially significant effects will be identified and committed to by the Department of the Air Force in the final EIS and Record of Decision. Next slide. The Department of the Air Force welcomes your input in determining the full scope of the EIS. Written comments can be submitted tonight at the welcome table by using the comment form online on the project EIS website at amostareis.com, by sending them by email to amostar@tetra tech.com, or by U.S. mail to amostareis@tetra tech 1230 Columbia Street, Suite 1000, San Diego, California, 92101. You can also provide oral comments at the microphone at tonight's meeting. If you have not signed up to make oral comments, you can sign up at any time before 8:45 PM. To stay informed, check the AMOSS Star EIS website and watch for newspaper notices, media releases, and direct mailings announcing the availability of the draft EIS. If you would like to be notified directly of availability of the draft EIS and final EIS, please sign up at the welcome table or send a request by email or U.S. mail. Next slide. To make the most of your comments, please make them clear and concise and relevant to the proposed AMOSS Star Facility. You can provide comments as an individual stakeholder, by working with other interested individuals or organizations, or by working through your state or local government. When developing your comments, please consider what issues are of greatest importance to you, any additional resources that should be evaluated, and alternatives or mitigation measures that should be considered. And also, please make the Department of the Air Force aware of any information sources you think will be helpful in conducting the impact analysis. Solution-oriented comments that provide specific examples are more effective than comments that simply support or oppose the proposed action or state that it will have significant environmental effects without describing them. Next slide. Department of the Air Force representatives will spend a few minutes taking clarifying questions about the information provided in tonight's presentation. The oral comment period will begin immediately following any clarifying questions. During the oral comment period, participants will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up. Please limit your comments to the amount of time indicated by the meeting facilitator, to ensure that all who wish to speak tonight may do so. A stenographer will be recording and transcribing all comments. She's over here in the corner. If you are not able to share everything you would like to with the Department of the Air Force this evening, you are encouraged to submit written comments. All comments are requested to be submitted or postmarked by June 7, 2024 to ensure their full consideration as the draft EIS is prepared. The meeting will conclude no earlier than 9:00 PM. If you could go back one slide to the contact information, or... That'd be great, thank you. So we will open now to a period of eight minutes in which we will take comments, sorry, questions from the audience regarding clarifications for the presentation that was just made. This can be regarding the process itself, elements of the process, steps within the process, the facilities that we propose within this, the alternatives that we propose, and distinctions between them. Those are available questions to you. If you have a question, we ask you to please come forward to the microphone here. If someone has the microphone already, you can stand next to them and wait for an availability. Thank you.
Aloha, Y7, can you hear? I would like clarifying information as to Y7 telescopes and what is the purpose of each one of those telescopes? And how do they react? What is the relationship with the 7? And what is their purpose? And what is the ultimate goal?
So the seven telescopes, the first one is about characterizing objects in space during the daytime. Two are for training, test and training. A third is laser communication. Excuse me, two and three are test and training. A fourth is laser communications to increase communications capacity. There is a fifth and sixth that are also smaller aperture systems that are used to follow up on other objects in space. And that would be detected by the larger first telescope I mentioned. And then the seventh is the roof-mounted system and that would be used for laser ranging.
Laser?
Laser ranging. So what we'll be doing is sending a small laser signal off of satellites in orbit, much like radar does for aircraft, but with a light signal.
And what are the benefit of these telescopes to native Hawaiians?
So that's not part of this clarification. The benefit is, the need is for more access to space and better understanding of what's going on in the space environment.
So no benefit to Hawaiians? And I'm glad you did your research on how FAA acquired that land. It was stolen land, it was crown land, but mahalo for doing your research from last night.
My clarifying question is a little bit different but kind of focused for this whole point is, I was wondering if the court stenographer has familiarity or fluency with Hawaiian language and concepts so that she can relate a lot of phrases and concepts that are here. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, she works here on Maui.
Yeah, she she works here on Maui.
Thank you, that was what I was wondering.
Aloha. I got a bit confused with all the HIPAA and the NIPA. I'm trying to understand if there's an environmental impact statement from NIPA and one from HIPAA, and they disagree, how are those differences negotiated and what is the process? Mahalo.
Thank you. So that, we we'll just have to work that with the two various processes. So, we, as part of this that was mentioned, we're running these processes in parallel so that all of the comments will be considered by both statements. The NIPA, as was mentioned, is triggered because we're we're required that utility corridor from our existing facility across the state of Hawaii managed land to the STAR site that's on the FAA parcel. So, though we worked in parallel and we will have to just see it really depend on what the disagreement is as to how that impact may or may not disagree. It's it's too much of a too many, too many variables to know how we would address a specific unknown in the in the future like that.
Aloha. I just wanted to ask, you're talking about satellites, yeah? There's a lot of confusion between satellites and communication, and you're talking about lasers. Like, I know it might be a small little beam, but what kind of impact and what are the capabilities of these lasers? Like, how, like, can I just turn it all the way up and it's gonna be super powerful? Is there a limiter? Like, what, you know what I mean? Like, what kind of lasers and like LiDAR or whatever kind of technology? Like, how safe is that and where are the limitations and what? Because a satellite is a satellite or a telescope is a telescope. Why are you telling me lasers? So, if you can clarify to everybody what kind of lasers and technology you're using.
Correct, yeah. So, the final, the final wavelengths of the lasers would not be determined just yet at this time. Obviously, as the design continues, there's really two classes that get used. One that you can see with your eyes, and for those, we have to be incredibly cautious on how and when we emit. There's many, many safeties in place. If you're gonna emit a laser into space, we have, we have people standing outside watching for aircraft. We have radars were tied into the FAA so that we don't illuminate an aircraft because that would be damaging to people's eyes. And so, we also never, never send them below the horizon. It would only be upward into space. There are also lasers that are beyond wavelengths that our eyes can see, and those are used in many applications like police radars, things like that, where you didn't, you don't see them, they wouldn't harm your eyes, you'd have no idea they're even being used. And so, it'd be potential for those two options. But the final decision, excuse me, the final decision is not made. But the power would then also depend on the application. Like I mentioned, there's police radars or police lasers that get used to to test speed of vehicles. It'd be something very similar to that, but it'd have to go a little farther out into space. But it would be vertical and not, not down toward any inhabited areas.
When you mentioned the testing and training, what kinds of testing and training will be done?
So, as, as space becomes more populated and as, just like when, you know, aircraft or land based troops or even police people, we practice, sports fields, practice. And so, this training is for our space operators to know how to maneuver their satellites in relation to some other satellite. And we can keep eyes on them because most satellites don't have good awareness of what's around them. Imagine you're driving a car blind or you're flying an aircraft in the dark. It would be similar to that with satellites. They don't have good awareness of their immediate space. And so, they rely on ground based assets or other satellites to know what is around them so that they can perform their mission, whether that's an inspection of another satellite, so they can have confidence if they need to maneuver to maintain their orbit. They need to know there's nothing else around them, so they're not gonna collide with something and create debris, just like, you know, we we look out the window to, before we put on the turn signal on a car. It's the same kind of thing. You need to double check to make sure you're not gonna run into something as you're operating your spacecraft. So, we need practice, we need a space to do that, and we need help to observe satellites from a distance so that we can perform that mission safely.
And my other question is, when will the draft EIS be available? What's the timeline?
So, I believe it was in there, it should be after the comment period closes. Was it thirty days?
Right, so the comment period is these three days, yesterday, today, and tomorrow.
All the way through June seventh.
Oh, okay.
So, the comments can be provided electronically via the website or mail, all those ways, all the way through the seventh of June.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I guess I forget the exact day.
I think we can anticipate having the analyses conducted closer to the end of the year. But there'll still be a period at that time where you'll have time to review, thirty days to provide comments. We'll do something similar to what we did tonight, but with a more flush document. What you have seen on the website and available now is is the preliminary information of things we want to start scoping in the analysis.
My question is, is the current telescope on Haleakala right now inadequate? That humongous thing up there that they said that's what they needed fifteen years ago. Is it inadequate? Does it work?
It does work.
Well, then why are we doing it again?
Aloha, I have a two-part question. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Because fifteen years ago, there were probably ten thousand less things in orbit at least. And as more things are in orbit, more objects, there's more potential for collision, there's more potential for the traffic safety, right? It's effectively kind of what that that looks like. And so, with more objects in space, you need more telescopes to more frequently track the objects in space. And that's why we need added capacity and we need added methods of viewing various satellites in order to characterize what they do in orbit. So, that's looking at it not just visually like our eyes see, but also in infrared and in other wavelengths so that you can characterize what that satellite's capabilities might be to know whether it's safe or not, or having trouble, or needs assistance from its owner operator.
There's an old saying, and it said, if you build it, they will come. So, you're setting more and more targets on the top of our sacred mountain. That's enough.
I don't have a response to that. I want to say, I apologize for those who have lined up to ask a question. We are gonna run out of time for questions after this next person. We want to get into the comment period because that will be, we can answer questions, but the record of you providing comments is what will be included into the EIS, and we want to get to that and as many people within that forum as possible. And so, I'll only take the next question, and I apologize to everyone else who had a question.
Aloha, so I have a couple of questions. The first is a two-part question. Just to clarify, is the location of the proposed new telescopes directly adjacent to the existing telescopes? And if so, what makes this location of the new seven telescopes so much significantly favorable that there is a need for them?
It it's adjacent to the existing High Altitude Observatory plot, and so, it's in the same general area that is favorable to viewing space.
So, why is it so significantly more favorable if it's directly adjacent?
It's it's as fa- it's as favorable. It's the fact that there's not space on the current plot.
So, you guys can't use the telescopes that are already there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Okay, never mind.
She said, can we use the current telescope?
We would still use all the telescopes. That we would, we would have need of all the telescopes on the site.
Okay. And who is the cultural advisor for this proposed project?
So, the person that is taking the, performing the initial cultural impact statement is Ms. Maria Orr.
Okay. And then the last, are any of, oh, sorry.
Maria Orr. Maria Orr. I'll let, yes, she is here tonight and based here.
Is she from Maui?
I don't believe so, but I need to.
Okay, and then?
I will say that those who have name tags this evening are identified as part of the people, part of the supporting role for the EIS. If you see them, you can ask them some questions.
Okay, and then lastly, are any of the telescopes that are existing gonna be decommissioned?
No, that is not part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions, ma'am.
Maria Orr does cultural impact assessments. Right, she's not the cultural advisor. She does cultural impact assessments. She would be, I believe, the person who would take our comments as into a report, which may mean absolutely nothing because the last one that was done for the ATSD said there would be definite irreparable harm to this mountain. And they still built it. That was my, this is my question, and I think it's pertinent for everyone here. You are taking comments from us. In the comments you are taking, which ones matter? What are you looking for? What matter, what can we say that matters? Because we did this last time, and there are thousands of people who testified, and you just ignored it. So, what is it? Do we have to say that it's deleterious to our health? Obviously, you don't care who owns this land. You're just stealing it. What is it that you are looking for from us that would actually make it so that we could have the first outcome, which is, don't build? What, what is it that you, that you will listen to? Are you looking for health hazards? Are you looking for that this is going to be doing something to this land? What is it that we can say that will give you critical information about no build? I think you should answer that for us, so you don't waste all our time.
Thank you for that question. I'll reiterate what was said in the presentation, which is also found within the documents online. These are the areas in which we will be conducting the analyses. The direct or indirect and cumulative effects on air quality, airspace use and management, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazardous materials and waste management, health and safety, land use, noise, socioeconomics, transportation and traffic, utilities and infrastructure, visual resources, and water resources. And I believe many of the comments that you had mentioned are encapsulated in those things. Thank you. We're going to transition into the comment portion now. So, I have a few remarks with regards to our comments this evening. So, yesterday, we heard from Keke and Kopuna, professors, teachers, students, concerned community members, members with longstanding histories on Maui, and members who have shorter histories here. Some had prepared remarks and some spoke from the heart. They related their opinion on the proposed alternatives, then brought up concerns such as, and this is not all inclusive, and forgive me if I'm not gonna say the same words you did, but they included desecration of the mountain and lack of understanding of Aina in general, US government disrespect for the Hawaiian people, appalling growth of Science City, terrible timing of the request, government waste of resources, desires for peace and not war, generational trauma on local families, and watershed and desecration hurts from last year's fuel spill on the site, and finally, making Maui a target for someone else's wars. And I hear from you right now that those are things that resonate with you. What I expect this evening is just because one of these topics were brought up yesterday, that does not mean you can't talk about it tonight. So, if you have a time, if you have a number and you're gonna be able to come forward, please do not refrain from speaking your mind and sharing your words if those are your topics or if you have something else to say. Forgive me, I gotta bring up one more resource. I will say, with regards to how we would like it to go forward, when you come up to the microphone, I'll call a number. You'll come up to this microphone by the front. You, please state your name and if you have an affiliation with a group. To ensure that everyone has a chance to have as many comments as possible, please limit your comments to three minutes. We will have a chime that plays, probably just near by you, that you'll hear. That'll be your indicator to please close out your remarks and have a seat so that the next person can please stand up. To ensure the participants in the meeting feel comfortable and that we ask the commentators, please refrain from shouting, using foul language, or using threatening remarks. We also have invited the Maui Police Department to join us this evening. If there's any, any chance of safety to anyone in the rooms behavior, we will ask them to step in, but I don't anticipate that being the case. I will say that last night, that did occur. We asked, the Maui PD came in and escorted one person who did not have remarks on this project, and we didn't want them to speak. So, they came in and removed that person. If after everyone else has spoken, if there's people who still wish to respeak or if you have additional comments to make, you can also go back and get another number. If we have time for that, we invite you to do so. Given the numbers that we already have signed up, I don't anticipate anyone having a second chance. And so, I will also invite you to please provide your additional comments written in through the website or via email. Okay, so without further ado, I would like to ask the first person to come forward and provide, I'm sorry. Number one, wasn't able to stay. He had a prior commitment, and so, he's not able to come forward this morning, this evening. But I'll, I'll ask number two to please come forward.
I'll start with my affiliation. I'm here today to voice my opposition to the proposed Air Force Maui Optical and Supercomputing Site Small Telescope Advanced Research Facility on Haleakala. So, I'm not using your acronym and I'm using the long name of the project because I want everyone to see what you're trying to do here, right? With your slide, with that telescope rendering, like, calling it small as if that somehow makes this project any less reprehensible is insulting and deceptive. The very notion of this project, no matter the scale, is an affront to the cultural and spiritual significance of the sacredness of Haleakala. For the record, because you know, I gotta get on your record, that's why I stay here again, I reject all of the alternatives you propose. Alternative one, your seven telescopes. Alternative two, oh, just six of them. Object, and even your no action alternative. To suggest that the only viable options are variations of the same destructive project is an insult to my intelligence. No more development on Haleakala, period. Furthermore, okay, so you give us thirty-three minutes, yeah, like comes up here top. But you get like, had three slides last night. This is like one whole two column list of topic areas that the EIS is going to cover. So, that gives me time to like, talk about one thing, right? So, let's talk about the supported socioeconomic benefits of this project. So, in particular, the employment and income. So, who will actually benefit from these jobs and new employment opportunities? Let's be honest, these positions will not be filled by individuals who are from here. You are gonna bring people from outside of Maui further exacerbating our already overburdened housing shortage crisis. So, now your project is going to bring more people to our island, putting further strain on our limited housing and driving up housing costs even more as if that's not even a problem right now. You're literally, this project is making it, or you're adding to our problem, making it impossible for local families to find affordable housing. Like, were you, you were here for years, right, Lieutenant Colonel? You've been here? Maui was devastated by the wildfires that burned rampant on this Aina that left so many of our families displaced, countless structures. That left so many of our families displaced, countless structures destroyed. Do you not think that our construction industry might be overwhelmed with the immense task of rebuilding our communities and infrastructure? Shouldn't our focus be on supporting those efforts rather than diverting any resources to any new projects? Also, just as an aside, I'm not interested at all in any of your mitigation, okay? It is just not possible to mitigate the irreversible harm this project will cause to the natural environment on the Mauna. More importantly, though, is that my humanity as a native Hawaiian is not yours to frickin' mitigate. The degradation of our cultural identity and spiritual connection to this land cannot be reduced to mitigation measures, sir. For generations, native Hawaiians have faced colonization, dispossession, and marginalization. And in 2024, we are here, once again facing yet another threat. I heard your roast last night, thus no casting in my thing tonight. But we are not the ones posing a threat to you. It is you and your project that is posing a threat to us. Do you get that? How can you not see that the time has come for you to leave our Mauna? Seriously, read the room. Wrong time, wrong place, wrong Mauna, wrong people, enough already. No more telescopes on Haleakala. Kiko pow.
Thank you for coming. Number three. Thank you. Four will be next.
Aloha, Oko, Omako, Ka'ohana Jokin, he ku'a Aina no Maui, e ku'e'e nui ino loa i ke kukulu'i'a, oname'a ho'o haumia Aina. Oko Makoa Aina loa, he maupaa ohe'nana. E haku muha na ko'iko'ika Ma'ua e kupaleana. Oyeho'i i ke aloha Aina, ke kapu'aloa, kapilimo'oku'auhau ame ki'ake'a kama'i o kekumulipo. Akana, kapokole'ona minuke oi'akui'ana e ka'ana Ma'ua i elua valen'au. Akahie, he maupo'e ike loa komako po'e kupuna ahe nihika hele. Ka'upalana'i'a ka'Aina ame kahi'e noho maluhia'e i ke la'amekiya me'ola o kahonua. Okavao e lima'au, okavao kanaka, okavao n'ale, okavao akua, okavao ma'ukele, ame kekualono. Ayeho'i ka'Aina kupuna Omako, okahi'e nohoa ikala mai'a vahi okavao akua ma. Palapala'i'a makalupe'aku'oko'a ika la'elua oi'ani wali, ma'kahiki'umi komavalu kanau'akumaha, ma'kekanika'ono kamoi i'olani kamehameha'eha, na ka'amehameha'eli mapenei. Mehe, mehe kahonua la, kahiki vave i kahonua Aina. Iya'kula mehamehavava'kula, a'ohi kanaka, a'ohi ko'olu'a, a'ohi ukali'ine'a mahope. Alua, mai'a nihii hele, mai'a nihii ana'oka'ale ona kupuna kapu'aloa. Iloko'okahuaka i hele loa, he maupokole'a ika nohoa oko'a. E yeho'omakalupe'aku'oko'a ika ma'kahiki'umi komavalu kanau'akumahiku'la, akalakolu'kumahahi'au'aukake, na hepepe no Maui hikina ikakau na konamaka ika'i'ana. Wa ike ho'au ika piko'ohaleakala emka luwa pele pi'onue, kaulana loa o kahonuane. Wa ha'a he'opono'omau'ene i luua kaulana la, he luua i ike ole'i'a konaluua me'ke'au ne. Yamako imaka ika'i'a iua luane, ika po'a makau inoho'a imaluna oi'ama'una, e ehia iholako'umba na'o. A'ohi leo, a'ohi kapalili'ana okamanu, a'ohi na keke'ana okalau'na hele. A'ohi ho'i ki'hahe ma'lie okamakani naana e hahai ika la'i mehameha oi'akola au iki'a'i'a iha Haleakala. He ku'a hivi ali'i'omau. Hela'imaluna ahe la'imalalo. Wa noho ma'lie na me'apao meheme'ala uakapu'kama'una, hano'hano'oe i Haleakala. Lohe'awane iko'ma'ua leo, kani kupuna ikiya ai'ahi. A'evaiho'ana inamana'o ku'una havai'ikahiko, no kekapu'loa okahi e kukai'kala. Mahana.
Is number four come forward? And if number five would like to be on standby, you can get through the next people, so you can come up to the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Kiana Ke'olani. I am a descendant of Maui's chief, P'ilani, currently residing in the Moku of Kula and the Ahupua of Waikuli. And as such, I feel it is my responsibility to stand up for what is pono for the people of Hawaii. Today, I am here to make known that I reject the proposal for telescopes to be built on my island home, Maui. Haleakala is not just a place, it is a wahipana. It is a place that holds the memories and spirits of my ancestors. It is a place that has cared for me and my family throughout generations. We, the Hawaiian people, are deeply tied to this land. We are this land. It is a part of our identity, our culture, and our heritage. You may not fully understand the depth of our connection, but you will respect it. This land is not something you are entitled to. This land belongs to none of us. We, as Hawaiians, are simply the caretakers, the protectors, allowed by Hawaii to stay because we have stewarded this Aina with love and aloha for each other, with reverence and respect for our mother earth. You will not do as you pleased anymore. Your disregard for aloha, respect, and boundaries is unacceptable. We have tried to teach you our way, but you refuse to learn. Now we, the people, will unite and help you understand that it is time for you to pack up and go home. We, the people of Hawaii, prioritize the well-being of our land, our people, and our future generations. We will stand to protect what is rightfully ours. Haleakala is not just a mountain. It is a living testament to our culture, our spirituality, and our existence. We will not stand by and watch it be desecrated. So hear our voices, hear them loud and hear them clear. The proposal for telescopes on Haleakala is rejected. We will stand united with aloha in our hearts to protect and preserve our sacred mountain. This is our home, and we will defend it with every ounce of strength within us. Defend Hawaii!
Thank you very much. Number six, step forward. Number seven, please be ready.
Aloha, I'm Miss Lizzy Elizabeth Ray. I'd like to thank and honor all the inspirational warriors who spoke before me in opposing this project. I believe God has chosen these Hawaiians to cultivate and steward His most precious lands of Hawaii. They hold truth and wisdom. Your science lacks this truth and wisdom. In fact, lacks God at all. It supports a science of war, violence, death, and depletion of Hawaiian lands. These stewards hold a certain spirit of truth that the world cannot receive because it neither sees Him or knows Him, but we know Him, for He dwells within us. And God said, "I brought you into a bountiful land to enjoy its fruits and good things, and when you came in, you defiled my land and made my heritage an abomination." Your greed has done this over and over with Ko'olave, Ma'neke'a, Haleakala, Alawalu, and on every beach in Hawaii. Your iniquities have made a separation between you and your God, and your sins have hidden His face from you, so He cannot hear. So I urge you in making this decision, be sober-minded, be watchful for your adversary. The devil prowls around like a roaring lion, searching for someone to devour. Resist him in your faith, knowing that the same kinds of sufferings are being experienced by your brotherhood all over the world. Hawaii, to this day, is struggling with the right through the local government to maintain their lands, keep Hawaii sustainable, and represent local Hawaiian culture and practices throughout their community on these islands. They still lack the power in the local government and are still being subjected to ceded lands by the government and priced out of their land by tourism and rich stakeholders and governments who show nepotism to their community. So I believe that this proposal means to desecrate Haleakala in the name of science. And we know what to be wrong. This makes your silence howly, like Mo said. Howly is a mentality that can exist in any creed. A howly mentality puts itself before the village. It puts itself where interests can harm the collective. It places value on possessions over mana. It places a value on ownership over the Aina instead of sustaining our Aina. Where this land is perpetuated in righteousness, please stop abusing it and your power over it. Everything should be going, all money should be going towards rebuilding the Aina. We know this. This is not good. Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven. Number eight, please be ready. Seven.
Aloha, my name is Kiana Reyes. I'm 17, and I am a community of schools. I am here today, excuse me. I'm here today standing with you all as a proud Hawaiian. I remember when I was seven years old, marching for Ma'neke'a. And it's saddening me, seeing my Aina that I lived on my whole life to be destroyed and being built over. My ancestors were here for thousands of years before you. They loved this land, they took care of this land. And I am here, I'm here to be the reason that it stops. To be honest, before this, before this, I was too nervous and too scared to step up and talk with my people, my Ohana. But I'm older now. I'm strong enough, and I am proud enough as a Hawaiian to be here and speak. I'm here to say as well, how many, this is real quick, four or five questions. How many telescopes are on Haleakala right now? So can you answer that?
That is your question, I'm sorry.
Ah, that's good. So we're building, we're building seven more telescopes with this amount of other telescopes. Let's say, five years from now, how many more telescopes are going to be built on Haleakala? How about 10 years from now, how many more? 20, 30, even longer? Is Haleakala just going to be an mountain of just telescopes, of your buildings? I want to say, as a Hawaiian, every time you build a telescope, a building, on our Aina, it hurts. That's my, that's my culture. I live it, I breathe it, I speak it. I live it. My whole life, I've been on the Aina. I farm, I help people, I live as a Hawaiian. So when you come here and do all these terrible things to my Aina, my home, it makes you want to, it makes you want to cry with tears of sadness. Look at my ancestors, my Kapuna, looking down from the heavens. Look at us now, they'd be depressed and sad, seeing all of this happening on our Aina, on this beautiful place we call Hawaii. Molokai, Hawa'i, all of our elders. So I am here to stand with you all as a proud Hawaiian and say, enough is enough, Ma'una.
Number eight. Number eight? Or did I just skip seven? Sorry, number eight.
Seven.
Seven, my apologies, seven, please.
Aloha, Mai Kako. My name is Lodi Reyes, and I'm 14 years old. I have, I was born and raised here on Maui in the Moku of Kula and the Ahupua of, um, sorry, of Waialuhu? Waialuhu? Oh, sorry. And Haleakala is not just a regular mountain. It holds our ancestors, and it's where we all started our culture. And like my brother said, it's where I carry my culture. It's my home, and it's where I brace myself as a Hawaiian. And I'm not standing with your idea to place more telescopes on the Mauna Haleakala because we already have enough? And you're putting your ideas onto our Aina? And we're just repeating history where you're overthrowing Hawaiians and you're just not listening to them? And you're just disgracing their views on this topic? And I'm also here to say enough is enough because I'm tired of just being overthrown by white supremacy, and I'm just so done with it. And I want to thank you all for coming here to also support this topic because I know we're all tired of it, and this needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, please step forward to be on standby. Please.
I am here to stand against the build of these telescopes. You use our land, our mother earth, to do experience, and you say you'll respect us, yet you are still using Aina on our land for your training. My Ohana can feel it in the ground when you shoot. Our Kapuna have been resisting this US military for centuries. You have not looked on the past. Why do you build these telescopes on Hawaiian homelands, our lands, our Aina, our Kapuna, when you clearly know we don't want them, nor you on our Aina? You come here illegally, illegally occupying our islands. We are not American. We will fight. You shoot down what we love using your weaponry, bomb our islands, leak our tanks, all for what? Because you are afraid of the threat that's not even coming. It has been years since the few tanks leaked on Haleakala. You say you'll clean it up, but have you? Who are you to tell us you are going to build on this Aina? Do you know who we are? We are the Kama Aina. You think you can save the land with your telescopes? Us Kanaka, we don't like it. We gonna say no? Few tanks in the ground, our oceans are polluted. Protest together so our va'ain't diluted. Pona i'aho'i ke aloha Aina. Taking care of this place, it ain't something minor. Pick up the Kuleana and go deer park. Future generations gotta keep 'em in your heart.
Felina me ke aloha e ulahu'i. Ohina puamohala ke bertnu'u ko'ui'noa. He Havai'i'a, he Maui'a. Amamuli'oku'uhana'i'a ana, ma'kapoli kapu'oku'uma'una. E kupono'ua i ka'odelo'ana ke Haleakala noho'i'a. I am Haleakala. Haleakala is me, there is no separation. I was raised on the bosom of this mountain in a place called Waipoli. And in its malu, in its loving protection, I became the wahine I am today. This mountain has given me everything, and I'm here to give back to my kua hivi by saying absolutely no more telescopes. Comment on the EIS preparation notice? Why should I comment on your racist document? Look at pages 21 through 24. I encourage everybody to look at them. How dare you act like people of color matter? Then tell me that because the people of color, Hawaiians, in the project zone don't comprise 50% of the population? There is no environmental justice concern? Rubbish! Absolute rubbish! So insulting. So insulting. It sounds like the 50% blood quantum that isolates me from Hawaiian homelands when the AMIS supercomputing site sits on DHL land. It's staggering! It's staggering! How dare you act like being Hawaiian matters? And then proceed to exclude my voice and the voices of all? and the voices of all the Hawaiians that live in Census Track 303.05? It's not happening. It's deeply offensive and I completely reject your EIS process based on that alone. Find a new one. It's just another part of the legacy of harm that started when the Navy turned its guns on Iola'ani Palace and backed the illegal overthrow of my country. We are still dealing with the illegal occupation of our aina today. This is not America. On what grounds are you on these lands? Your budgets are billions deep, billions deep, yet you use and desecrate our aina for a song, for a dollar, while you ride on your military gravy train of housing subsidies and beachfront properties while Hawaiians and other local people are houseless and suffering, suffering, leaving our homeland in droves. It's disgusting. It's disgusting. It's a legacy of harm sold as defense. Pohaku'loa, Makua, Pu'u'loa, Koho'olave, that's just a few of the aina that are polluted and destroyed because of the US military. I was my daughter's age when the US Navy was bombing Koho'olave. I felt the earth of Waipoli shake. I felt our house shake. I heard the dishes in our kitchen rattle on the shelves. Do you have any idea of the impact that experience has on a child? This is the fire you get back when you do that to a people's homeland. But the shaking I felt is nothing compared to what children in Gaza are experiencing as they get trapped and killed under falling concrete, coming down on them because of American weapons which have flown unfettered into Israel to enable a genocide. It's disgusting and so shameful. A legacy of harm spun and sold as defense. Kelly Hammond, the man who got AMES up and running, said himself that in his career with the AFRL, which is part of the Directed Energy Directorate, that he developed the Air Force's first ever operational directed energy weapons in collaboration with Raytheon, three high-energy laser weapons, Thor, the list goes on. How could you think that the people of Hawaii would want to be connected to that legacy in any way? Any way? You will not continue to use our mountain for research, to develop directed energy weapons or any other weapons that make us a further target, that hurt our own aina, that have and continue to kill black and brown people in the global south, our brothers and sisters in the Pacific and people all over the world. Free Palestine and free Hawaii from the grip of militarization. No telescopes. No more telescopes on Mauna Kea and no more telescopes on Haleakala. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Number nine.
Wags, I don't envy you. I certainly don't envy the position that you're in in these meetings. Try not to kill the messenger here because you will have to take the information, the mana'o, the iki that you get from us, back to the people that sent you here to take this heat. So, you know, I don't know what to say except, you know, give them the heat when you get back to where you need to and relay the information that we're giving you.
Aloha mai kako. My name is Trinap Fertaro and I am aina. I come from this aina. I was raised on this aina. I birthed my keiki on this aina and hopefully will pass and return to this aina. I understand what it means to aloha aina. I understand what it means to have kuleana and I understand what vahikapu and vahipana are. Vahikapu, vahipana, these aren't just phrases to be defined in online and print dictionaries. They are guidance from our kupuna, reminders of our kuleana to, for, and within those spaces. How we conduct ourselves, what is puna within those spaces and what is not. You have heard from last night's meeting. You'll hear more here tonight and yet more tomorrow night in addition to submitted comments that will overwhelmingly reiterate how your militarization of our Mauna is unwelcome and unwanted. These meetings, while showing your availability for impacted and interested community, don't really offer a true mechanism for acknowledging, honoring, and protecting vahipana and vahikapu. Also, while these meetings claim to take our comments and suggestions under consideration for your upcoming draft EIS, we have all experienced time and time again from the US military, its contractors, and its champions how our mana'o is dissected and used selectively and often misrepresented or omitted from subsequent discussions and actions. You describe the area you trespass as being conservation district and define what that means, yet not really displaying in your actions that you understand what it means. Not really conserving anything about the space except pockets of plantings that are crowded for the mekani within them. Space Force isn't even finished cleaning up the mess from last year and you will use the same systems that failed for what is currently up there now. Why should this project even be considered even separately when the timeline on that cleanup is still delayed? While you are not they per se, this project will be under the umbrella corporation, I mean, the umbrella of the Air Force. Further, there are other entities that you could contract with to track the over nineteen thousand space objects and pieces of debris larger than four inches in diameter in Earth's orbit as you claim is the need for on page two of this preparation notice. One such entity actually based here on Maui, which could be more long-term jobs for our local community here at home, is called Privateer. Their business is space-based services which include tracking and data mapping. So why construct a costly and redundant project when there are already services available that you can use? Unless a large part of this project enables further militarization of a vahikapu, a vahipana, and Maui as its extension. You come to our community to hear from us, to understand us and to work with us, then listen to us, care about us, care about our future and what your continued presence means to us. Leave our vahikapu, our vahipana alone. Mahalo.
Number ten. Number ten? That was number ten. Number London, thank you very much.
Aloha. As a Maui resident deeply rooted in the preservation of our sacred mountain, I one hundred percent wholeheartedly stand against the proposed development of the AMES telescopes on Mauna Haleakala. This endeavor represents not only a disregard for environment but also the continuation of the US military's troubling history of exploiting, destroying, and desecrating the lands of Hawaii. First and foremost, I want to state for the record that I am firmly opposed to alternative one and alternative two. The no action alternative is the only action. It's the only viable action. The US military's track record in Hawaii is stained with instances of environmental degradation and cultural erasure. Look no further than the destruction of Koho'olave. An entire island bombed into submission, stripping it of its natural beauty and decimating its water supply. The scars of such devastation remain etched into the landscape, serving as a haunting reminder of the military's unchecked power. I am old enough to remember the bombing. I was probably around seven or eight years old on the Palihway when the earth shook beneath us. And my mother pulled over at the Palihway lookout and we watched for an hour the bombing that took place. And I remember feeling so sad and looking at her and feeling her pain. Furthermore, the poisoning of your own service members at Red Hill at Kapukaki stands as a stark testament to the military's negligence and disregard for human life. How can me entrust you with the stewardship of Haleakala when you have proven your inability to safeguard even your own military personnel? And that includes women and children. You say that this development is for national security. For who? For people who live in LA, in New York, Texas, Utah, Colorado? Your project sets us up as, as a place for annihilation. You're not protecting us from war. You are endangering us. We all experienced the missile false alert on January thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. That morning, I have never panicked so much in my life. My kids were not with me, but I jumped in my car. Scared that I wasn't gonna make it to my children, but I told myself that I was gonna do whatever it takes to get to my children. That threat is a stark reality for us who live here with the presence of the Air Force on our sacred mountain. Space Wars, you're setting us up. We get annihilated. My children will get annihilated. That's, that's the reality we face living in Hawaii because of your presence. It's already happened. It happened at Pearl Harbor. Who's to think it won't happen again? Your proposal is not merely a scientific endeavor. It is a continuation of the military's legacy of environmental degradation, cultural genocide, imperialism, colonialism, and even neo-colonialism. We will not allow history to repeat itself. We will fight you at every meeting. We will fight you in the courts. We will block the construction. We will stand in solidarity and fiercely oppose any attempt to desecrate Haleakala. Why? Because their future and the kids that spoke before, their future depends on it. And like Kumuki'ope says, you cannot mitigate the sacred. No matter how hard you try, you cannot mitigate the sacred. I, I challenge you to put that into your EIS. What is your mitigation for synchroneness? Explain that to me. Kukia'i'a.
Um, are you number twelve?
Yes.
Okay. After your remarks, we've, some of the feedback from yesterday, we'd like to put a small pause right after your remarks. Just to get a little bit of break, mostly for our scenographer who's working all day and all evening. Short break, no more than three minutes after your remarks, please. Thank you.
Aloha no'i kako. Aloha no'i kako. O kirena ka'e'ua ko'ouinoa, ivakalu'a au makahiki. Ahe kupua'ao na ka'e'aho'opulapula'oa'e'ua ma'Mawi. O pukakula'au mai ke'kula ka'e'pu'ne'au ke'akaluke, ahe ha'omana'au ma'ke'kula'nu'i o Hawaii'i ma'hi'lo. Today, I'd like to paint for you a picture and understanding into my life as a young native Hawaiian. I went to my first protest rally at four years old. My Hawaiian origin preschool was right across the street from the State House building. How convenient, yeah. I didn't quite know all my ABCs, but at four years old, I knew the difference between pono and heva. When I was seven, I held signs protesting TNT on the Mauna. I watched as my kupuna chained themselves to Pohaku. At eleven, I wrote letters to the State House building convincing decision-makers that the diversion of va'i was heva. And two weeks ago, I submitted my oral testimony opposing the continuation of bombing on Pohaku'loa. During the spring, I took a trip to Koho'olave and I saw firsthand the negative effect the military had on Hawaii and its people. Oh, you guys bombed the shit out of that island. And you guys left my generation to clean it up. I am a product of generational trauma. I stand in opposition to the development of the AMOS telescope on Haleakala. Building a telescope on its slopes will not only desecrate its synchroneness but also cause irreversible environmental pollution. I am not anti-science. My kupuna were scientists. They could look up at the stars and tell you every star, every season, every wind, every makani, when the law came and when the law set. But what the military is lacking is a concept of aloha aina. Let us honor the sacredness of this land and preserve it for the generations to come, ensuring that its beauty and significance remain untouched by the hands of Tutu'a. E'ola kalahu'i Hawaii'i and wasee'ua on the Mauna. Mahalo.
At the time of seven forty-four right now, let's take a three-minute pause. Stand up, stretch, get out some fresh air, and then we'll come back at seven forty-seven. If you bring your order back in. When you feel ready, go ahead and begin.
Aloha mai kako. Ho'ano'au hina se'a'ku'ani. No'kula'au mai mai'ao, he ha'omana'au ma'ke'kula'au kamalai'a Maui. As a keiki deeply connected to my Hawaiian heritage, I stand in opposition to the development of the AMOS star telescope on Haleakala. Haleakala is not just a piece of land. It is a sacred place that holds immense cultural significance for the Hawaiian people. Building a telescope on slopes will not only ruin the synchroneness but also allow, also cause irreversible environmental problems. Growing up, I have been taught to respect and cherish the aina. Haleakala shows its connection serving as a couple place. Allowing the construction of the AMOS star telescope would be, would be just disrespectful and completely go against Amanato and traditions of the Hawaiian people. As someone speaking out against the AMOS star telescope, I am telling decision-makers to prioritize the protection of Haleakala's cultural and environmental integrity. Let us preserve the mana of this aina and preserve it for the generations to come, ensuring that significance remain untouched by the hands of military. Mahalo.
Aloha, o hina no'i ko'ouinoa. Omiku'ua au makahiki, amo'au'i Pukulani'au. Hi, my name is Siri Nai. I'm twelve years old and I live in Pukulani'au. I do not want you guys building telescopes on Haleakala. I grew up here on Maui and I always look up at Haleakala. In the highest point, I see the ugliest thing ever. Telescopes on Hawaiian aina. I think this is a really bad idea because the military has over ten telescopes on Haleakala. And we have such bad history with, the military has such bad history like Koho'olave, Pearl Harbor, and Pohaku'loa and Makua Valley. They bombed these places for over fifty years. And the day after Japan's attack on Pearl Harbor, in nineteen forty-one, the Navy declared martial law on Koho'olave. The Navy used Koho'olave as a target area from nineteen forty-one to nineteen ninety. The Navy assaulted the island with Na'pam'ma' atomic warheads, bombs, and rockets. I'm twelve years old and I know the difference between pono and heva. This telescope is heva. We don't need any more of these on our aina. I strongly oppose the idea of this devastation to our aina. Mahalo. E'ola.
Mahalo. Number fifteen. I'm sorry, ma'am. What number are you? Fifteen, fifteen. Great thinking.
Hey, aloha. In nineteen ninety-three, the United States Congress passed Public Law one oh three dash one fifty, formally, which is also known as the Apology Resolution, formally recognizing the United States' complicity in the illegal overthrow of the United Kingdom, or, sorry, the Kingdom of Hawaii. And that the native people of Hawaii, we never relinquished our inherent sovereignty over ourselves as people or over our national lands to the United States. Yet decades later, we continuously find ourselves standing against proposed actions that fly in the face of this acknowledgement. This is law. This is your law. And to continue to propose this, the law explicitly states the deprivation of the native Hawaiian's right to self-determination. How then can we sit idly by as the United States, who claims to act in the spirit of reconciliation and repentance, continue to seek to further desecrate our sacred places? It is to ignore the significant and debilitating loss of life, land, and sovereignty that our people have already suffered through immensely that this US law claims to recognize. So to continue in this direction and to continue to want to construct on top of Haleakala is to prove to us that the Apology Resolution is nothing but words, empty words, and that the US military is more than willing to break their own laws. when it's within their best interest. And I heard you say multiple times that no decisions have been made. That's false. You've heard it over and over again. The decision has been made. There will be no construction on Haleakala.
Number 16.
Aloha. My name is Kathy Macduff, and I say no emphatically to your proposed project on Haleakala. Sacred places are found throughout the world. The word sacred can denote a religious or spiritual significance to the place or site. An aspect of sacred is the feeling generated by a place. It is held sacred because it warrants or is entitled to reverence and respect. An example of a sacred place is St. Peter's Square in the Vatican. Temple Mount in Jerusalem is another example. You would never consider building there. There is a very renowned sacred place on the island of Maui revered throughout the world. It is called Haleakala. The holy site of Haleakala Crater is known to the native Hawaiians as the House of the Sun. Haleakala is the heart chakra of the world. Not only is this mountain sacred to the Kanaka Maui, it is on the numerous sacred site listings as one of the most sacred places on Earth. On sacredsites.com, Mount Haleakala is the first listed site in Hawaii. On the website of sacredland.org, the sacred site Haleakala is listed as threatened because of the numerous telescopes on its sacred summit. In 2017, the Smithsonian Foundation acknowledged in a Smithsonian magazine article that Mount Haleakala is one of the most sacred places on Earth. It should be protected. In May 2024, spiritual experts from around the world gathered for the Bali Spirit Festival. The topic? The most spiritual and sacred places on Earth. The consensus of the spiritual experts at the conference was that the top most sacred places on Earth included Mount Haleakala along with Stonehenge, Mount Kalais in the Himalayans, Lake Titicaca in Peru, and the Great Pyramids in Egypt. A recent book called Sacred Earth Places of Peace and Power by Martin Gray explores Earth's sacred sites. The cover shot of this book depicting the most sacred places on Earth was a photo of Maui's Mount Haleakala. How can you even consider building more unnecessary telescopes on this sacred land? In 2007, a supplemental cultural impact assessment was released, which sought to assess cultural effects and gauge community response to the proposed ATSD project. The published report concluded, "The overwhelming evidence from a cultural and traditional standpoint points toward a significant adverse impact on native Hawaiian traditional cultural practices and beliefs." The sacred nature of Mount Haleakala is indisputable. This fact is not subject to discussion or debate. The suggestion that the synchroneness of this place can somehow be bargained away by mitigation is not only disingenuous, but reprehensible. What you are proposing to do brings shame upon your organization and everything that you stand for. This proposed facility requires a footprint of 0.87 acres. The total land surface of the planet is 216 billion acres. Find another place to build your telescopes.
Thank you. Number 17. Number 17. Oh, sir, thank you. If number 18 can please step forwards, we can have a little delay time between them. Thank you.
Aloha, my name is Richard Lucas. I live here in Haiku with my wife Kathy. I came here with a simple message. I came here to say no. 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 Such a beautiful word, isn't it? No. It's so simple, and yet in its simplicity is its power. Because no says everything that is needed to be said. Okay? It is beyond contestation. It doesn't mean maybe. It doesn't mean later. It doesn't mean maybe under different circumstances. It is a total rejection of the proposition. And I say to you, no. You've spent years devising this plan for the desecration of Haleakala, and yet we're allowed three minutes each to respond. No. You come here to seek permission to build, build yet another surveillance facility on the sacred land of Haleakala. No. You insult the Hawaiian people and the Hawaiian culture by trivializing their respect for Haleakala and its importance in their culture. No. You seek to take advantage of the aloha spirit by assuming that you have superior rights to land that is not yours to take. No. Why are you doing this? What's the purpose of this facility that you're proposing? Is it truly necessary, or is it just another tech project for the Air Force or Space Force to play around with? The Air Force already operates a program called SSN. I'm sure you're familiar with it, the Space Surveillance Network. It tracks objects in orbit around the planet with a network of 30-plus Earth-based radar installations and optical telescopes along with six satellites in orbit. Now, the message here is simple, that there are countless sites worldwide that can be used to successfully track space debris. SSN currently tracks everything in space that is larger than 10 centimeters, about the size of a closed fist. It would seem that objects of this size would be better located by using radar than trying to look for them through a telescope. It also seems that smaller objects would pose little if any threat of collision in the vastness of space. But it is certain that the disclosed task of this new facility does not justify the desecration of one of the holiest places on Earth. And why on the summit of Haleakala? Objects that are in geosynchronous orbit around the planet are at a height of 22,000 miles above us. Haleakala lowers that by two miles. That's a difference in ratio of 1/11,000. What that would mean in practical terms is if you went to a football game and were sitting 100 feet from the field, and you lessen that by 1/11,000, you would end up sitting a little less than 1/8 of an inch closer than where you were originally. And that's what you want to do with Haleakala. That is certainly not a justification for desecrating one of the holiest places on Earth. And it's likely that in a few years, technology will make this facility obsolete as well. But the insult and damage to Haleakala will persist endlessly. ASARI 10 years from now will not fix this mistake. And so with respect to your request for permission, the answer is a thousand times no. Thank you very much. Just on a personal level, however, I would like to congratulate you on your choice of names for the project, Amos Star. It just sort of reminds me of a blues singer from the Delta in the 1930s. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 18 and number 19, please come on standby.
E'ola mai kau'ia nui ma'ke'akalani. E'ola mai kau'ia nui ma'ke'akalani. E'ola mai na'ua'ipaku akau'aika'ani. Ka'ani ka'ua'i nui, ka'ani ka'ua'i poku. Ka'ani ka'ua'i opoku. Ekau'aipaku, ekau'a'ilani. E'ino'mako na'pulu'ula aina o'ke'ia aina ni. Ke'ia aina kapu o Haleakala. E'ina mai ke'ola. Ooh, too close. My name is Kawila Mahi. I hail from Maunalu'a on Oahu, but my family traces their lineage and genealogy through this aina of Maui and especially to the Malu of Haleakala. I'm a Hula practitioner and a teacher of 'Ola'la'ha'ha'i. And I also am a troublemaker a little bit. One of the things that I wanted to ensure that I said up here was to talk about something that's really important to Poe'ha'ha'i. And that thing is Mo'oku'auho consciousness. And that's what it's called by Kumunui Nui Silver. And the reason I want to talk about this is to show how important genealogy is to all of us here who showed up, to all of us here who came to protect our aina. But I want to start by talking a little bit about my genealogy with this mauna. As far back as my lineage can go on this aina, like every other Poe'ha'ha'i ma'ke'ia moku'uni ne, like every other Poe'ha'aina that came to these meetings, our people have held ceremony on Maunakea. Before there was an America, before there was an occupation, before there was an American military, our people held ceremony here. And now, those ceremonies are harder and harder to hold. And we still hold these ceremonies till this day. I guarantee you, every person who has come here to contest your folks' proposed telescope has held ceremony up there. And the reason I say you make it difficult is you have a longer genealogy of desecration. And while our genealogy comes from many, many generations of rising up against American imperialism, American colonialism, American war crimes, and genocidal campaigns proposed by America, we have always been there. And we will continue to be here because we love this land. We are aloha'aina. And so I'd like to share a little bit of a genealogy of Amerika or America as kind of my closing statement, to talk about the environmental impact statements that Amerika has made. One. Ka'ai hui ana o'ka po'e ke'iki Amerika. Ho'omake'ana o'ka po'e wahine Ameri'na po'e mahu o'ke'ia aina. Murdered and missing indigenous women and girls have come part of the longer genealogy of American desecration inside of Hawaii. You can look it up in any of the impact statements that were made by folks all across groups that are organizing to protect young women and girls. And so those significant acts of desecration, stealing women, raping women, those are all part of the longer genealogy of American imperialism. And so the same way they treat our people, especially those who are most prone to being hurt, it's the same way they treat our land. We can see it. It has been part of the project of the US even before 1893, even before the overthrow. We knew that these were the moves, the konani moves that Amerika thought they would make. But we're here to say, just like all other aloha'aina from generations that have won in Makua and Koholave, and we will win in Waimanalo to restore people to their houses, to restore people to their houses in Lahaina, to restore our pelina with Puhaku Loa. We don't care that you're trying to desecrate further our tutu, further harm our kupuna. We will stand by her until the very last aloha'aina. Aikike aloha'aina ho'pe'loa o'ke'ia aina. Wa'e'ua'la'ino. Aloha.
Thank you. Number 19. Number 20, please come by and be on standby. Thank you.
Velina. My name is Stanley Kiope Raymond. I am the president of the group Kila Kila o Haleakala. Our organization opposes this project. However, this evening, I will be commenting as an individual, not as a representative of Kila Kila o Haleakala. Before I begin my personal comments, I want to say mahalo to Kako o Haleakala. It feels very empowering to wear a t-shirt of the same design that we wore nearly 20 years ago. Mahalo nui. I'm here to state my opposition to the construction of telescopes at the summit area of Haleakala as proposed by the 15th Space Surveillance Squadron in the Department of the Air Force to be called the Maui Optical and Supercomputing Site Small Telescope Advanced Research Facility, or Amos Star, planned as an off-site extension of the Maui Space Surveillance System, MSSS, of the Maui Space Surveillance Complex, MSSC. The MSSS is, of course, cited within the Haleakala High Altitude Observatory, HO, of the University of Hawaii's Institute for Astronomy. The main reason I oppose the project is that as a Hawaiian and as a retired professor of Hawaiian studies at UH Maui College, I attest that the summit areas of all our mauna, our mountains, are wahikapu, sacred spaces in Hawaiian culture. They are sanctified spaces. This project would be a desecration of Hawaiian sacred space. It would seem imperative that to prevent more desecration, there should be a comprehensive management plan, a CMP, for current and future use of Haleakala's summit area. However, there is none. That is another reason I oppose the proposed project. Unlike Maunakea, the summit area of Haleakala does not have a comprehensive, community- and user-driven, and importantly, culturally-appropriate management plan. To add to that, unlike what Maunakea has in place, there is also no Haleakala oversight and stewardship authority housed within the State of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources with native Hawaiian practitioners and consultants as consultants and decision-makers. You know, a probably incomplete list of Haleakala summit area users and structures would include FFA communication towers and TV and phone towers and their operational employees. Also, the UH Institute for Astronomy, High Altitude Observatory, and the LACEs and partners and their employees within the 18-plus acres of what is often called Science City. Those include the DKIST, the PANSTARS, the TLRS4 Laser Ranging System, the Falk's Observatory North, the Atlas Telescope, the Zodiac Light Observatory, and of course, all the structures within the Restricted Maui Space Surveillance Complex. Also, within the HO... You know, my hearing is not good, so if there's a tone, I'm not going to hear it. Also, within the HO, ad use by community amateur stargazers and those going to the two Hawaiian altars therein. The summit area is also accessed when using the skyline trail by hikers, trail bikers, hunters, and federal and state employees and private landowners as they go down to or up from Poli Poli along the southwest rift zone. And since space domain is in discussion, let's not forget to include air tours regulated by the FAA flying in the skies above Haleakala. Very importantly, the Haleakala summit area has always been and is still accessed by native Hawaiians making religious and spiritual pilgrimage, making connections to their aku'a, to their ohana ancestors, and to the aina, and to practice gathering rites from the aina. And last, but not least in numbers, users of the summit area include employees of and the nearly 1 million annual visitors to Haleakala National Park. Now, Maunakea does not receive a million visitors annually, but it has a comprehensive management plan. Haleakala gets a million visitors, but despite all those people and all those other users of Haleakala's summit area, there is no comprehensive management plan. We need to ask, why not? Currently, when we think of the uses of Haleakala, we tend to think of them separately. The National Park is thought of as a separate entity. Science City is separate. The communication towers are thought of as separate. However, all are within the summit area. Some entities using the summit area, like the National Park and the Institute for Astronomy, have their own long-range plans, but there is no overall oversight of their plans. Ironically, in this instance, the UH Institute for Astronomy's long-range management plan, submitted to the DLNR to fulfill state law requirements for conservation district zone land use, does not include interaction with the Amos Star project. The Amos Star project, yes, is to be cited outside the boundary of the IFA's HO acreage on a peripheral site. However, data derived from the Amos Star array is proposed to be used by one of the IFA LACEs within the HO, the Maui Space Surveillance Complex. How can one summit user, the IFA, who had to submit their intended land use plan for a conservation zone district, derive benefit from another proposed separate summit user but does not need to do planned resubmital to the DLNR? I think it's another chapter in the questionable history of the University of Hawaii and Hawaii State and US federal government officials. Some call it collusion. Kila Kila o Haleakala, when opposing construction of the DKIST was successful at the Hawaii State Supreme Court in arguing the same issue, it is proof, from my perspective, that management of the acreage of at the Haleakala High Altitude Observatory needs to be taken away from UH, as was done on Mauna Kea, and given over to a Haleakala stewardship and oversight authority. Without a comprehensive management plan and stewardship and oversight authority, inappropriate projects like the construction of the EMO Star array, another desecration of the summit area of Haleakala, might be developed on a seemingly separate parcel, yet its development will have a cumulative adverse impact on the whole summit area. This request for DIS comments regarding whether there could be seven or is an alternative, just six, more telescopes on Haleakala's summit, is inappropriate at this time. It's disingenuous. And from a comprehensive oversight use of the summit perspective, it's a red herring, a diversion. Haleakala needs a comprehensive management plan and stewardship and oversight authority enacted for Haleakala's summit area before EMO Star or any other requests are even considered. Mahalo.
Number twenty? Thank you.
Aloha, Kako. O Kingi Gilbert Ko'enua, no'au Te Aro'a mai au. Aloha. I'm nervous. There's a full barrel of energy coming, so I wanna to our elders and to all the kupuna in the room who opened, mahalo nui. I acknowledge the ololo hava'i, amenapoe hava'i, and all of our culture here. Mahalo. I'd like to acknowledge you guys for being here today, presenting the project, and also all the admin staff as well for contributing and taking this message. The infliction in my voice, I'm from New Zealand, so there you go. Married my wife in 2010 and been coming back and forth between 'au Te Aro'. As a Maori, we're taught to be very respectful to where we go, so I'm treading very carefully here and very respectfully. So mahalo nui, ya'oko, no'oko aloha. Thank you for having me, and I am very honored to be here. Thank you. New Zealand perspective. We're a small nation, so we can't afford to be offside with America or China. But as I travel the Pacific, and I travel a lot, I go to Samoa, Tahiti, New Caledonia, many places. I have seen an invisible and felt an invisible tension emerge between China and the US. And it's uncomfortable. And we do have conversations, oh, there was an American ship here last week. Oh, there was a Chinese ship here last week. And a general got off, and he offered us some money to do things. This happened recently at the Pacific Games. So there's an increasing tension in the Pacific, and it's uncomfortable. And what I've felt today come forth is a real discomfort of Hawaiian. And as a Maori, I'm here 100%, and I acknowledge that, and I'm with you guys. And I ask, do we need to do things confrontationally? Are there other mechanisms? Maybe they're not at your level, maybe they're not at the NEPA, HEPA level. Maybe they're at a higher place where new levels of diplomacy can occur that involve Hawaiian voices, perhaps even New Zealand voices, Australians, Samoan, Tongan, to build some sense of kind of peace about what we're doing here in the Pacific. Because I like to travel around it. I like to go back home. I don't really want to enter into a militarized Pacific. And I think you have a unique opportunity to shape the aims and objectives of what the Space Force is doing, not only for the US, certainly for Hawaii, but for also all of the Pacific. If it's just surveillance, I'm sure that's great. I just, we shouldn't be doing it on places which really going to irritate people. I'll be honest, you know, I'm thinking in the back of my mind, and am I going to have to protest? Am I going to have to get down and strap myself to the gates of Haleakala? I think there's other ways to resolve what's happening, and I'm not sure if this message is for you, that all the planners. Maybe it's above the level, but maybe at the state, at the DLNR. Are there people here from the DLNR? Are there people here from the state who are listening to this? I'm curious about their involvement and how Hawaii's views. So the one message I would like to support is what Kiopi Raymond just said. How is Haleakala managed? How are the people of Maui included? One real clear thing is the use of ololo hava'i. Like, one little thing could be done, just presenting a bit more ololo hava'i, opening, getting people's attention, and ololo hava'i might be a nice way to kind of build some relationship with the people here. So mahalo nui. Thank you again for hearing these comments. Thank you, everybody. And respectfully, support your mission, and thank you for hearing me. Did I say my name? Kapo.
Mahalo. Number twenty-one.
Aloha, ahi ahi, Kako. My name is Nia Fitzpatrick. I grew up in Huolo and Haiku. I graduated from Ke'kalike on the slopes of Haleakala. I humbly show up here today as an advocate for Kanaka Maoli'a ka'aina. I am not Hawaiian, but I am keiki o ka'aina. This is the land that raised me. Thank you. I'm also nervous. Thanks for saying that. I prepared a speech. It is Hawaiian cultural practice to ask consent before entering wahikapu, before simple actions such as planting in your very own backyard, and absolutely before massively disruptive actions like building on the summit of our sacred mauna. If your senses are honed, you will feel the answer in your na'au. If you don't speak ololo aina, you may need to ask for a translator. Kanaka Maoli, the indigenous people of this place, are the voice of the land. I acknowledge that these scoping sessions are your way of asking consent, and the resounding answer is no. A'ole construction, a'ole desecration, a'ole militarization of our most sacred spaces. I'd like to speak on behalf of our more-than-human kin, the plant life, the animal life, the insects. The insects are the foundation of a delicate ecosystem such as Haleakala. Haleakala is home to ahina'ina, the Hawaiian silver sores, an endangered plant that is found nowhere else in the world. Ahina'ina is home to endemic insect species found nowhere else on Earth. Two years of construction disruption is two years too many. If they spoke our language, what would Mea Kanu say? Na'ini ko, namanu, a'ole. I had the opportunity to speak to Molly, the project manager, employee or contractor of the Air Force. I encourage all of you throughout this process to speak to the people with the white name tags, ask your questions of them. They are listening, and they'll integrate what we have to say into their reports. She shared that this project is projected to generate $30 million in revenue. Revenue for who? How many of those millions will stay in Hawaii? How many of those millions will stay in Hawaiian hands and will serve Hawaiian lands? Can you guarantee us 30 million of your billions, a'ole? That's all I have prepared, but I will say, for me Haleakala is like the sound of the sand beneath my feet. It's the texture of the outline on my eyes, right? And there's a panel back there that says, what is the impact on noise? What is the impact on the air? What is the impact on the water? Many, many, many folks have shared, what is the impact on our cultural resources? What is the impact on our future generations? And I don't think that a report can fully encompass the impact. And I do have faith that you guys can feel what we're trying to, I guess, translate to you today. But Western, you know, English language presentations, et cetera, cannot. And that is why we are all here today. And so, from my heart, a'ole.
As twenty-two comes forward, I have a short just notification. When I last talked to the people who were accepting numbers, I think they told me that we were in the 50s. We will likely not get into the 50s this evening due to time. We will have to leave this building at 9:30. So that's an hour from now. I think we can fit in many people. But if you are one of the later numbers, I encourage you to talk to the table on the way out if you weren't able to speak tonight. And if you're able to come tomorrow's evening, we'd love to have you speak as one of the first speakers tomorrow. Sorry to take your time, please.
Aloha. My name is Frances Salvato. I grew up in the Chicago area, and I've been a resident in Pukalani for the last 10, 11 years. Deeply grateful to be Hanai family of the sweetest aunties on the planet and to be part of the kukui puka ohana. No to the building of the telescopes. Know your place in this land. This is Hawaiian land. Your visitors, respect. Haleakala is sacred. Thank you.
Twenty-three is next, and twenty-four can be just behind this next speaker. Thank you.
Aloha. I didn't realize last night that we were speaking with Space Force, so I would like to introduce myself from Star Lineage. I am considered an Andromedan. I have been spending most of my time on Sirius. I can remember 6,000 years on this planet, and I'm mostly a lyre and hybrid. I forbid you from any violence to any star nations at any time. You do not have the capacity to make those sorts of judgments. So when we talk about protection, I grew up on Kauai. And when Uncle was talking last night about all his neighbors, and he's spelling out the lineages and how he knows all the cousins, and then he's like, and then there's this guy who lived next door, and he worked for the telescope. And you see the disconnect of the fabric of protection. As a 13-year-old walking around the streets of Kauai, all I wanted to, until 10 o'clock at night, all the time, I always felt protected. Because every beach park I went to had all the families, every place I went anywhere had all the families always watching out. And they have that awareness of the space and the understanding that is so deep from inside of where they need to be at the right time, at the right place, to make the right action. So I really liked what he continued to say, which is that the right action here is to show us how well you can clean up. We've seen now that these weapons that are up there are not conducive to the lifestyle that should be existing here. And to explain, like, the spiritual fabric of a community, like, we're trying to get across what the spiritual understanding that is not inherent in this United States system. It's something that has to be learned because it's a "don't go with your inside, listen to what you're told from the outside" dangerous position. Because if someone needs to be told from the outside always what to do, they're never going to be reliable. They're not trustworthy. They need someone else to be in the room to be trustworthy. That's not safety. It's not protection. And so, these space debris are the least of our concerns with something that can be used as a weaponized laser. So growing up in Texas when I was younger and looking around, so I had, my parents knew, we're going to have a girl. Her name is going to be Rose. So I'm announcing myself before I come. They had Rose everything. By the time I was three years old, I had my first past-life memory. By the time I was seven, I realized that the United States system does not have the capacity to convey information and receive information in ways that are pono. So this is a deep concept, like piko. And I know that she did her whole thing in Hawaiian, and maybe you missed the piko part. But if we take the example of essential oils, like, I can rub essential oils all over different parts of my body and have different effects. But if you put it in the piko, it makes big problems. And that is the piko, Haleakala. It makes big problems. You cannot put anything else there, and you need to remove the dangerous things that you've already put in. Please listen to this host culture. We spent 40,000 years seeding this planet before all of humanity arose from these islands and dispersed throughout the world. There's a saying that comes from Waimanalo that in times of crisis, run to the three sisters. That's Haleakala, Mauna Kea, and Mauna Loa. We're here. This is a time of crisis. We need you to see your humanity inside, develop your spirituality, and stand with us for the right things to happen on this land. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Number twenty-four, thank you. Number twenty-five will be next.
Hello? Pa'akuku velina. My name is Tomawa Park. I'm a Hawaiian. I'm born and raised here on Maui, and I'm a high school educator. And I cannot tell you how proud I am to see some of my students here today. Yeah, these are Hawaiians from the next generation. So since I didn't have a chance to ask my question earlier, I want to put it on the record now. Will you assess the impact of intergenerational trauma of Hawaiians in your EIS? Well, like I said, I'm an educator, so I cannot help but share some knowledge. Here's the opening line from a o'chan, Mele'a kamuhulele, and it goes, this means here is Hawaii, a moku', a place, a land, but is a person, yeah, he'kanaka. Hawaii and Hawaiians are one and the same. Okay, let that sink in. Hawaii and Hawaiians are one and the same. So you cannot do an EIS in Hawaii and only look at the impact of Hawaii as an environment, as a place. You must look at us, yeah? What is the impact on Hawaiians? Okay, we are Hawaii. So let me tell you right now, this should be your EIS. Hawaii is stating its impact, and we say no. Okay, we demand no, no action alternative. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Number twenty-five and twenty-six will be next.
Aloha, mai kako. O va'keia o wahine hula ka'ao. He'keki papa no Maui. Hanai ia makapoli o Haleakala, ma'keia hupua o wa'ehuli. I wasn't really going to testify. I wasn't really going to testify because I'm not really sure I have anything compelling to say. So I'll keep it short. But first off, a'ole to the building of not one, not two, not three, not four, not five, not six, but seven monuments of racism, imperialism, and violence on our Mauna. You know, the name makes me laugh. Small telescopes for big trauma. The history of the military in Hawaii is a violent one. These are monuments of violence. I want to be very clear. Reminders of the pillaging of our land, the polluting of our water, and violence against our people, specifically our women and our children. I know you know what I'm talking about. We all know what we're talking about, right? This is not about how I feel about the military. This is about the violence you have shown us, our kapuna, my sisters, and my keiki. I grew up coming to these meetings. At one point, I was probably one of the little girls that you see running around here, and it's heartbreaking that I'm still here watching my elders, Kumuki'ope, Antihoku, Antimiki, reiterating the same things that they were saying twenty years ago. And as a kumunau, a teacher in our public education system, I'm here to tell you not to be scared now, but be scared of them. Be scared of the children that I am currently teaching because they're coming. So I opt for option four, which you forgot to include in your presentation, which is to decommission, apologize, pack up, and go home. I'd also like for you guys to put on record how many of us showed up to speak but were not able to. Mahalo.
Thank you. 26.
Aloha, everyone. I'm very grateful to be able to speak and that we have this freedom to speak our mind and to be listened to, so thank you. My name is Amy Chang. I teach part-time at Pai'as School. I have eighty students and have a small business. I came here mainly because I know that the United States is currently funding three wars. We're funding a war in Ukraine. We're funding a war in Israel. And we're funding Taiwan. And where are we? I've always called Hawaii the tropical military outpost of Rome. But now, if we have these telescopes, which are supposedly for laser or surveillance, this puts us, very well said by Uncle, as a target. Like if we can track from the talk of Haleakalaa, who is tracking us tracking? And what I would say is so if you can please put us on health and safety, it completely endangers this whole island. Our safety is at danger. Also, on health, can we count mental health? How many people have we talked? It's going to be another huge insulting trauma and damage. And we are not even recovered from the Lahaina fires. It is so disrespectful and to put this burden when the community is already stressed out, stretched out, serving, exhausted. Now we have to fight this? And what I want to say is, I did go up to Mauna Kea. I wasn't a kapuna then, but I've got gray hair now. And you know what? All the kapunas sat across the road. People, is that what we have to do? We have to lay down? We're gonna, I mean, I'm just gonna say, this community, maybe you didn't realize what you got yourself into. But we will fight. We will resist at every opportunity. And so please convey that back to the powers over your head. Because I know it's not really you. You probably don't have that kind of power here. It's somebody over there. Oh, that's the other point I want to say, is I read this thing about safety. The proposed facility operated will be primarily operated remotely. That means whatever they build on top of Haleakalaa is going to be primarily operated remotely, like maybe from San Diego or now we have AI. I don't know. Where is it gonna be operated? I don't think it's gonna be from Maui, which further endangers us. It's decisions made probably at the power level of I don't know what. Way over your head. So I just want to put that out again. This community will fight, will resist, will lay their bodies down, every age, from keiki to kapuna. And so you should know that. So it's better if you just go somewhere else. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Number 27, followed by 28.
Haleakalaa. Haleakalaa is kanaka. Haleakalaa is ova'ua ku'a. Haleakalaa is where we go to pule. Haleakalaa is where we do our ceremonial protocols. Haleakalaa is where we go to cultural practice. It's in my uhone, it's in my koko. Haleakalaa is sacred. So I want to make this clear. Oppose Air Force military proposal to build the seven telescopes expanding on top of our Mauna. Na'fu'ri, au.
Aloha. 28.
Aloha mai. O'au o'ho'ashii men bya vata'ha'ri. He Hawaii'au. Nah'ula o'ahu mai'au. No hakula'au. No ke'au aha'ku'a'a o aya'ku'a. I live on my kapuna aina that has cradled and carried me. Aina that has been passed down from generation to generation for thousands of years. We are born of the stars. Their evi surrounds me. My koko, my blood runs through this soil. I stand here representing my ancestors before you, who are makali'i navigators, mahai'a, caretakers of this aina. Time and time again, they have told you guys, "No." Starting from the legal overthrow of this Pai'aina. And the proof is in the ku'e petitions. Haleakalaa, sacred kapuna aina. Vau'a ku'a is a place of reverence and a piko, a source of connections to where I come from. A spiritual and significant va'ipana, a sacred portal. I wake up every morning to kalaa and kilo I observe too. I see what you guys are doing up there already, and it's not pono. I document everything I can see. Imperialism, desecration, genocide, raping, and poisoning of our people. It includes our land, our water, our food, and everything in between. From baha'ku'a, Malka, to Makai. Two months ago, when I took my son up to do pule and protocol, there, face at the entrance to the American flag, no recognition of Kanaka Ma'ali. Where's our high Hawaii? Heva'lo'a. We always try to find a private space to do our sacred oli and protocol, and yet we get malahini coming around us, taking pictures and videotaping our sacred practices. It is not a show. It is a lifestyle. Last year, seven hundred gallons of diesel fuel leaked into our precious vau'a ku'a. You guys still have not cleaned it up. You guys see what happened on Red Hill recently? Poisoning our people and your own military families. Our kapuna warned you guys from the very beginning. Why is there a need to observe and research and do more training in space? Why? What is your approach to a sustainable and healthy ecological environment? What is your impact upon this aina where we are now? Where we have been and where we will always be? What is it? How are you guys helping our people of Maui? Especially where recently lives were lost, homes are burnt down to the ground. And you guys come here with your insensitivity, lack of empathy. We're done with this, pau. This is not our war. The fires in Kula were a mile away from my hale and could have crossed over easily. In fact, there was a fire right in front of my hale, but I got it. Remember these faces. Your actions and intentions show lack of ethics, morals, humanity, and empathy. It makes my aina alter really sick and disgusted. We're not taking this BS anymore. Heva'lo'a. You guys are not welcome. Ho'i, woki. Ku'i ka'pono, ku'a'a heo, ku'e ka'heva. Ku'e ku'. Eo Haleakalaa, eo Maui. Eo. I am a hundred percent in opposition of these seven telescopes.
Thank you. 29. Thank you.
Aloha, my name is Sala. I am born and raised here in Hawaii, and I'm a STEM educator and a mom. One of my ancestors arrived in these islands as a ship captain who came to Hawaii generations ago and fell in love, like literally everyone does. He stayed and served King Komahemahia IV in various capacities. Another one of my ancestors came here during World War II as an engineer for Lockheed Martin, the weapons manufacturer, and no doubt was a contractor within the military-industrial complex. Which ancestor do you think I am proud to claim? And which ancestor do you think I am ashamed of? How do you want to be remembered? What type of ancestor will you choose to be? One who recognizes your responsibility to honor the indigenous people or one that chooses to be a cog in the military-industrial complex of the United States and upholds systems of oppression that harm indigenous and all people on planet Earth? Our one and only sacred home. Before I share my comment, I would like to ask my question from earlier, which is, at what point will you, or whoever is in charge of this, determine that the impact is too great, too harmful on the environment, and therefore this project must be abandoned? Does such a point exist? Is it when the water becomes contaminated and undrinkable, like at Red Hill? Or when the land is untouchable, like the entire island of Koholave? Will it come before or after the air is unbreathable? Before or after the oceans boil? Before or after every inch of sacred land is desecrated? Is there like a certain number of indigenous people who need to spend their precious time and energy here reminding you that this is their land? The Air Force and the rest of the US military is supposed to protect us? Protect us from what? From each other? We need more telescopes so we can surveil other humans while all of us burn on a planet you set on fire? While we continue pouring whatever resources are left into war and violence? This is supposed to make us feel safe? The World Bank estimated in 2018 that the US military-industrial complex is responsible for the release of approximately three hundred thirty-six million metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions. That was before it was complicit in the genocide in Gaza. Situated amongst the one hundred ninety-six countries the World Bank ranked by greenhouse gas emissions in 2018, the US military-industrial complex came in at the twenty-fifth highest, polluting more than one hundred seventy-one countries. And we are supposed to trust your environmental impact study? The fact that y'all do this for every project and still manage to cause so much harm is evidence that the process is just for show. Your actions show that you do not care about the environment. Indigenous people are caretakers. They have kept this land pristine for thousands of years, and it has taken America less than two hundred years to pollute it and cause irreversible harm. I trust the indigenous people, and they are saying, "No." Please soften your hearts and listen. Kanaka must be the ones who lead us here in Hawaii. They must be the ones who teach us to keep our planet livable. Please do it for my babies and theirs and yours.
Thank you. 28.
Aloha. O timana ma'auhi. Kamakaku'a, kapuna ika honu'a, ko'enu'a. We don't need all the telescopes anymore. We need to fight back. We need to stand strong. And ku'i ka'aina, mahalo.
Mahalo. 29.
Thank you. This is Claire Pana from Wa'uku, and I'm speaking on behalf of Malamaka Kanilua. Malamaka Kanilua stands in support of the living Kanaka, the living traditional practices and customary practices that we have the right to have. Malamaka Kanilua stands in protection of our evi kapuna to be in their places of reinterment, of being interned, that they should never be moved because this is our land. And I would like to say that in your DEIS, I would like to see a real explanation of how the Kanaka Ma'ali could possibly not be harmed by you ignoring all of these people here who have said, "No." How they could not be harmed by not allowing us to respect and honor our traditions as you have set forth in your ARFA law, your American Indian Religious Freedom Act? To give us the right in your paper to practice our traditions and religion? How could we not be harmed? I want you to show us that we are not harmed by that in this DEIS. I want you to show us when the government lies to us. As I believe happened, Lieutenant Wags, Lieutenant Colonel Wags, when I asked you, "What was that telescope going to be built for down by the brewery in the tech park?" And I didn't get an answer. But it's a sixty thousand square foot military installation right there. You know, there's a school across the street, the brewery, there's other buildings, business buildings. And your telescope, I believe in your, it is related to Haleakalaa. How is it related to Haleakalaa? And what is the impact to the people who live near there? We would like to be sure that you include that in there because if you are running that telescope, those telescopes from down there or any place on other places on Maui, we need to know that because those are military installations, and those people are definitely in more danger. What happens to these young people who have come today to show you how important this mountain is to them? Do you understand that it's not about your five telescopes? It's not about just only what you represent, but how you affect the land, the energy, and the spiritual components that are important to us? That we should be able to see the top of our mountain from below, from every fishing koa, every ha'au. Every ha'au? We should be able to see it, not see your telescopes. These are impacts that you could possibly understand. And they should be in your EIS, not only in the cultural impact assessment. They should be in the body of your EIS so that they can have importance. And I just wanted to say that I think you are doing a cultural impact assessment that is our chance to show how important this land is to us in maybe more than three minutes and three sentences. And how do people get to do that? Do they get to sign up with the people who are doing it that are here? Do the people who are here get to sign up and say, "I would like to be part of that study"? I hope you will make that very clear to them, everyone, so that they can sign up to have their words spoken and their impacts recorded properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thirty-two? Thirty-two is next.
When I was young, that's a joke. My grandpa used to take me up to Haleakala back in the 50s. And I wrote something, very short. Oh, before I say that. We rode on his old Dodge. My cousin and I sat in the back in a rumble seat. You know what is a rumble seat? Guys, you remember what is the rumble seat? Oh, I owned it, man. That's in the old days. Like the Studebakers and all that. Only two people sat in the front. And when it rains, you, there's one windshield wiper and you do it with your hand. And there's no backseat. The trunk was the backseat. So my cousin and I, we figured we'd we macho, we would sit in the backseat. Oh, bruh, when it's snowing or it's raining, man, it's cold. Up there gets cold, Haleakala. But I remember writing this on top Haleakala. A pinpoint, yet profusion. A dot, yet a ray. A speck, yet galaxy. My head's all right. What I see, I feel. What I hear, I feel. What I touch, I feel. I talked to everybody last night about the boundary of Kahiki Nui. While they were building the telescope, that big phallic rock with the balls. The, what do they call it? Oh, yeah. The osprey, those big military helicopters. At least twice a week, they would come from the Air National Guard in Honolulu. And they would fly over my house. And the osprey would almost lift the house off the ground. Why? Why do you guys gotta do that? I'm not doing nothing to your telescope. Why do you guys intimidate us? I made official complaints to the Air National Guard, to the FAA, to Maui Police Department, to Kahului Airport. And they couldn't believe that somebody would complain against them. They wanted to know, are you gonna give us your name? Yeah, I'm gonna give you my name. Are you gonna give us your address and your phone? Yeah. So you're officially complaining? Yes. Why were they so worried about me? Are you guys gonna do that again? The hell, this osprey would come at least twice a week, going over houses in Kahiki Nui and just showing them their, I don't know, their power over there and just and your house is shaking, your roof is shaking. If I was a bad guy? Oh, would have been simple to shoot them out of the sky. You know? But I'm not. You guys the bad guys. Last night I came over here after working on my house. And my wife said, "Hey, you never take a bat." "Bruh, you gonna smell." But I said, "I'm not smelling as bad as them." Jeez. Okay, last night I shared two, an ola and a song. So tonight I'm gonna share. If you guys let me. This, this, this is a song I wrote. Right below the telescope that they wanna build is a pu'u called Manu'kani. And I asked, I asked a koa, what, what does this mean? Manu'kani? Okay, are you Hawaiians? What is manu? What is kani? Huh? Song, okay. That's what I thought. So I went to Manu'kani and I set up my hali'i. I brought my guitar, I bought my paper and my pencil. And I thought, oh, the answer gonna come real easy, eh? But it didn't come the first day. I stayed overnight. About 10 o'clock the next morning, the answer came. I was looking out towards Kona. And a big, big cloud was coming from Kona. And I got my answer. In search of the meaning, I found myself on top the pu'u o Manu'kani. All alone, I sat and waited. The reward for waiting was the sound of a thousand birds singing, chirping, and screeching. Only there were no birds and no trees. The Hawaiians call it Manu'kani. On top the pu'u o Manu'kani, looking out into the sea. On top the pu'u o Manu'kani, the birds begin to sing to me. At first, I'm sitting all alone. It feels like there's nobody home. The Kona winds come from the sea. The gulls are all surrounding me. I feel a chill run through my bones. It seems to say, I'm not alone. And as the clouds fly over me, I hear the birds o Manu'kani. The Hawaiians call it Manu'kani. On top the pu'u o Manu'kani, looking out into the sea. On top the pu'u o Manu'kani, the amakihi screeches from the trees. The ivi sings to me. The chirping of the ponies in the trees. Oh, yeah. Okay, I shared you another one. This one is written on top Haleakala. I spent a lot of time up there writing songs. I spent a day there, a night there, a morning there, another day there. And so that song, this next song is part of two days of observing. The moon has run its course. The night breeze upon your face. Time now brings the morning sun gently down upon this place. Quickly bringing everything to light. Barely visible, the ending of the night. The birds begin to sing their melodies. The past of the sky grows bright over me. The rolling hills and mountains take on their earthly tones as the clouds keep moving onwards, where? Nobody knows. The sun brings light even from behind the clouds. The moon takes its final bow as you feel the gradual warmth upon your face. Kahiki Nui is a beautiful place. Ever since, yeah? They talk about sensitive views. Ever since, they built this telescope. Can I write? There's nothing to write about. The only thing I can write about is tears. When I walk the 'aina and I see rocks coming down the mountain, in them are tears of my kupuna. When my house is shaking, that's the sound it makes really, really loud. Yeah. So now on my computer, I, I, I get this alert, "You are now on the federal watch list." I, I don't own a cellphone because I don't want them tagging along with me every place I go. But, you know, I write things in my book. But that's how you guys are affecting me. Everybody is affected differently. But I used to write, I, I have a book where I write songs. You know, it was published by the University of Hawaii. And that's how I'm affected. So what is the mitigation for that? It's like Red Hill, drinking poison water. You guys are poisoning my heart.
Thank you, Clara Pana. Thank you for everyone's patience this evening and getting through these as many comments as we can. Appreciate that. Thirty-three?
Aloha, my name is Sharon. The street name on Hulani from Hana. I am one of the four great grandoffs from Hapana Three. Tonight, I have invited Kiafoni, the prince of here, to hear all of you. You, the voices blessed by God. Everyone of you that came up and spoke to your word, us, about the beautiful words you shared with the world. Put that in your head, put it in your head. Don't let us, as our people, suffer. We are children of God. Stop. Last year, May 20th, 2023, I'm already up here in Pukalani, we're coming up the road. I could see Haleakala. It was 4:10 in the afternoon, I'll never forget. What do you think I saw up there? I saw a spear with a hand right through Haleakala on the rim, which means that was God's sake. He was the one that we got and sent someone there to hit the rim, to let me know, to share with you, to stop. And what I saw behind that spear was all the sparks in the back. Okay, now this was last year. All the sparks in the back. To my left, as I was driving, I pulled on the sign and I saw everything falling from the top. You know what's happening? We are falling apart. What's wrong with everybody nowadays? Not my people. People from not here, foreigners, are destroying our island. Leave us alone, all our island. God has blessed us with giving us the island with all the faith we have in him. You have your place, I have my place, they have their place. Leave us alone, go back where you're from. I am not only Hawaiian, I have a little blood like you. But I respect my people. I respect my husband, he has a blood like you. He respects me. So I'm telling you folks, military, whatever you are, you guys are not perfect. All you guys do is come here, eh? Jam as ah, you folks is damaging our land, damaging our people. What about our ancestors? You guys are damaging them, but they're too strong. You know what? The strongest telescope on this earth right now comes from the eyes of God. Why not stay outside and look up? You're going to your telescope one day, his eyes will be looking at you. Today he is. I came all the way from Hana. I live here, I watch driving from Hana. I have work in Hana to do. I come home, my husband is home sick, I'm here. Because I love my people. We may be families, yes we are, yes I'm sorry we are. And I don't care what anybody sees me up here. He asked me to come here and talk to all of you. My people are very important. Without our faith, without the love for God, we are not here. So we have a blessed place, Haleakala, House of Assam. What does it really mean? Assam is God's, the light, the light comes from here. The hale, what hala? Haleakala is his home. So we are, should be up there to pray. The pathway to heaven. Pukalani is also the open place to heaven. This is a special place. It's a place God has created for all of us for a reason. I have a reason to come up. Eight and a half years ago, I was in a coma for 10 days. I come out of the coma, I died for 45 minutes. And I prayed to God, he brought me back. And there's a reason why I'm here. At the age of 75, I care because I was here that long to share my love with my people. So think about it, think about it. You folks should leave our island alone. God's words, he said, it's a stop. Enough, enough. And that's why I saw what happened to the rim of Haleakala. I won't share the land with the 'aina. It's already done. But our people are still waiting. Don't make my people wait forever. This is our home, it's not yours. Go back where you're from. You have a place God gave you. Take care of your place, leave our place alone. And respect our place. Your people coming from up there don't respect our land. Save for the rich ones that are only Hana. How do anybody respect it? So I'm telling you guys now, go back where you're from.
Thirty-four?
Kako. Aloha, my name is Kako. Oh, hello, land, ko'una. I am Executive Director of Society for Better Leaders. I grew up under the slopes of Mauna Kea and Mauna Loa, learning aloha 'aina as I went to protest to desecration to our 'aina. I am Keke Oka'a'aina. I have an ecology evolution conservation degree from Uachilo. In 1999, I volunteered to help survey the Mahakaloa training area, identifying endangered endemic species found nowhere else except for at Mahakaloa. We had to drive through the bombing zone. We had to pretend that there were no endangered species in the bombing zone because we couldn't be there. Currently, they are discussing if they should continue bombing at Mahakaloa. Haleakala is a sacred site and has endangered endemic species found nowhere else in the world. These species are at an increased risk due to changes in climate with decreased rainfall and human impacts. Your construction will continue to impact these endangered species. Diverting runoffs from the summit impacts the ecology. There is no comprehensive management stewardship plan. I am a scientist and according to science, the answer is no. Additional military presence will increase us as a target. My children and the keke of this island shouldn't be a target. Your osprey already shake our home in Hana. I risked myself tonight to come here in the rain and I have to drive back from Hana. And making us all an increased military risk? Making us a target? The answer is no. We all have received the messages about missiles. We don't want to be your target. Maui is currently hurting from ecological Maui is currently hurting from ecological and cultural genocide. Lahaina and Kula fires have taken away homes and lives. We are hurting. I've been a teacher at Hana School for sixteen years, teaching my mostly Kanaka students. Kanaka has self-determination to lead their lives and that means that Kanaka has the right to decide what happens on their land. Listen to the mana'o, their thoughts of the Kanaka. They're speaking. They all say no to desecrating Haleakalau. According to Kanaka, the decision is no. All viewpoints and all testimonies, all say no. Aloha aina, mahalo nui loa, ahui ho.
Thirty-five.
Aloha aina kakao. Ova'o o'abri, ke alohilani watsu'ura. Hehava'i au, naunaho naa pi'ilani, ame hamakuapoko, ku'u o'hana. Na'ma'o imai au, hana au iau, a'uahana'i au vau, va'hali'imaile, ikamalu o'keia mauna kilakila o'Haleakalau. Kahihoi, e'hana'yai ika'uma'akeiki. Aloha, I'm Abri, I'm from Maui, my ohana's from Maui. I am from and raised in Hale'imaile, the same place that I am raising my own keiki. Okay, first and foremost, I completely oppose alternative one, the proposed development of seven telescopes. I oppose alternative two for six telescopes and assert the loud and clear response from our people for no action. Further, I oppose any development of anything not for and by Hawaiians on our aina. I am an educator and also a student. In the classes I'm part of, we often talk about positionality. Our position as researchers and our responsibility to the community we hope to research in. We consider how our research will impact that community and what that relationship will look like after the research is complete. My question to you is what is your positionality here? If we are to base it on past projects, past research, it is clear there's blatant disregard for your positionality within your research and in those projects, in a place and to a people that you are clearly not part of. You have no kuli'ana to this place, you have no relationships here, you have no position, you are Maha'o'i. Anyone who understands the deep and reciprocal relationship we have to our aina will understand the opposition that we have to developments such as this proposal. One, we are descendants of our aina. As is outlined in our genealogies, we are of this place and are this place. Two, our kupuna are literally this aina. Their bones are this aina, they have become this aina. Three, Haleakalau is a wahikapu as you've heard many times and houses many wahikapu. It's the vau'a kua where our kua dwell. Four, you have no jurisdiction on these lands. These are crown lands that were seized illegally. You are occupiers of the Hawaiian Kingdom and we want to deoccupy Hawaii. Five, we refuse to be any part of your evil militaristic violence. I echo the overwhelming noise that you all are hearing and that you will continue to hear forever. Aloha aina.
Thirty-six.
Aloha, my kakao. O'kahaka, patolo ka'ahnui, ko inoa. I'm originally from Oahu and now live in Hana, Maui. No two telescopes. I'm surprised how you guys even created this space force on Oahu and Maui behind our back without even knowing. So, and the other thirteen telescopes need to come down on Mauna Kea. No two said it. Take that one that you have right now, I don't know how much you guys get up there, that needs to come down. Kupuna say gotta come down. For you guys to do it is really highly disrespectful, highly offensive. I just wanna, well, since I'm looking at you guys, since we got invaded January seventeenth, eighteen ninety-three, and our queen surrendered to America hoping that America would realize their mistake and restore her back in her throne. America never did. Now here we are. And then you're asking us stupid questions that you wanna put seven telescopes? Ah, olay. Go back home, you're not welcome. You guys came, invaded us, and you never left. It's time to go, aloha.
Thank you for your way. Thirty-seven.
How's it like being a summer star? No'ma'kaua mai au, no hamakuapoko mai au, no Haleakalau mai au. I'm from here. I come from a long line of military men, naval commanders, US colonels, US Air Force colonels. Because of my positionality as a daughter of the Mayflower, as a daughter of the US military, the US military that abandoned my grandfather's widow and his three children not but weeks after he plummeted to his death while testing a B-52 bomber and asked them to move off base, rendering her a single mother widow. That trauma lives on to this day. I'm the mother of two native Hawaiian children, missing and murdered indigenous women and children and girls, two spirits. The US military is one of the largest predators of children like mine. My invitation to you, hauli to hauli, my brothers, is to be a traitor like me. My saviors in the name of my grandfather, my great-grandfather, and all the founding fathers that came before them. We will be here until the last aloha aina, know this. And we sure do love to hold ulu our laui. We love to grow our people. It's not gonna only be brown people you're killing, my cousins. It's gonna be people like me 'cause we won't lay down, 'cause I've already laid down. I want you to tell your superiors that this would be strategically disadvantageous for the Pacific Theater. Oceania is rising, the Pacific is rising. It goes beyond race, it goes beyond nation. You two and every other cog in this machine could change the world. Especially look at the international stage. Just like our brother from Altero was saying, just like people bringing up Gaza. These are themes and you have choices. You don't have to receive all this energy. You don't have to receive, you're a pawn like me. So, hauli to hauli, US Air Force to US Air Force, US Navy to US Navy, US government to US government descendant. It's not gonna work here. So please, deliver that message politely to your superiors that you're not welcome here. You need to go home and we will not stop. We're not stopping, we're not going anywhere until it lasts for you.
Thank you. I think we'll have one remark post yours and then we'll have to close out.
One remark after me?
After you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I'm Maui Hello. I just wanna reiterate that whatever it has said, as they've been saying, you cannot separate the culture from the environment. I wanna further that and say you cannot separate the culture, the environment, and the political. Hawnani K. Trask, also Hawnani Okavaki Haleakalau Trask, has said, "You cannot separate the culture and the political." She never said Hawaiian culture, she never said Hawaiian politics. She said culture and the political. With that being said, you cannot tell me, you cannot convince me otherwise that there is no political agenda behind the EIS, behind these meetings. You cannot tell me there is no political agenda happening with the American military, it's political. And so let's just get that straight. It's not environmental, it's not science, it's political. Secondly, it does not escape me that Amy Starr, not a singer, is Amy Starr Cook as in Castaway Cook. So let's just also get that out of the way. Furthermore, no seven, no six, no forever telescopes, mahalo.
Thank you. I thought we'd love to do you a good night.
Aloha, my kakao. Ova'o o'oli'a zukoka'e, hekamaki'i au, no kiiya aina. Wahana'i au, ma'kialo o'Haleakalau. Ano'ane'i mai ku'upua'i kupuna. I also wanna say that it's insulting that everyone here has come and that you are gonna stop people from sharing their mana'o. We have experts from the community, we have people who took it time. We all throw parties here, you can stay a little bit longer. For the record, I vehemently oppose both alternatives one and two. And option three is insulting. No mitigation or decommissioning. These proposals are an insult to our community. To be clear, you are not guests here, you are not welcome. You are settlers in the process of settler colonialism, which aims to exterminate Kanaka from our lands through the military expansion and military occupation of Hawaii. The arrogance that you have to sit here and watch my community, watch the pain unfold in my community, my kupuna, the next generation. I'm beyond proud of all the keiki that stood up and spoke their truth, but it hurts that I have to sit here and see their pain. I would never wish this on you and your children. We will not allow you to sacrifice our community, our kupuna, our aina, our aku'a, our gods, for your progress. We are not collateral damage for your agenda of war and environmental degradation. The irreversible damages of the US military are inevitable consequences of your very presence on our lands. And we've spoken about this, kaua'ala de Pahakulua, Puhaki, the entire aquifer of Oahu. And on top of our mountain, the Fields Village that is still not mitigated. This pain and trauma and its effects on us are not hyperbole. You are inflicting trauma as we speak. We will not allow any further desecration, any further military expansion in Hawaii because our lives and the lives of the generation after literally depend on it. But we are here because of the strength of our kupuna, because they modeled for us how we resist. We are aloha aina, we will never give up. This is our land, our mauna, our gods, and our country.
Thank you for those remarks. I do apologize for those who have wasted so long, who had intentions to speak this evening. By time limitations, we just aren't able to get through everyone. I do encourage you to come tomorrow in Kihei to the community center. We'll do a similar format to this evening and have the same amount of time as we did today. We do encourage you also to provide written remarks through the website and through the mail. In closing, I'll say first be safe outside with the rain, traveling home, especially those who are going long distances. I do realize that is difficult tonight. I hope you'll be safe. I want to tell you that I appreciate your candor. You did not pull punches and I do appreciate that. We want that on the record. I appreciate your passion. And even if you don't believe us, that we do want to hear these things, we do appreciate that. And thirdly, I wanna say I appreciate your courage because it is not easy, one, to speak in public and two, to speak against a powerful organization or figures. And I do represent, I do understand that that can be difficult. And so I appreciate your courage in doing that this evening and I hope we will hear more from you and the rest of the community tomorrow. Thank you very much for your evening and I wish you a good night.
Yeah, absolutely. We fully, fully expected this would be something that we would get a lot of, a lot of attention, absolutely, from and we welcomed that. We knew that was exactly what we wanted, was to just get the public input. And I know, I know it feels like a broken record. There's been a lot of these scoping sessions. It feels like we're just rinsing and repeating, but it's just the way the process works is each, each project has to go through this process. And so we, we kind of expected it. I wouldn't expect a lot of people to come in and say, yes, I love it because that's equally as unhelpful, because there's no impact, it's almost wasted time. So the fact that there are critical comments, that is what we wanted and that's what we need and expect out of the process. Yeah, so this, the, the project will be an extension. It'll add capacity and add capability of our current systems that are on the mountain. And so these systems look in a wide wavelength. They look both visible, they look into the infrared wavelengths. And so that allows you to characterize objects, which is really important to determine the intent of an object, much like an aircraft. We have aircraft of all different types and sizes. So we have different radars and optics that we use to characterize aircraft in important areas. And the Pacific, space assets above the Pacific are really important to people's livelihood in these remote areas where a lot of satellite communications occur, a lot of weather forecasting because we don't have terrestrial radars over the ocean. So weather forecasting is tremendously important so that we can warn people about weather, storms, all those kinds of things. While we don't do any of that from Haleakalau, our systems keep tabs on the systems that do provide that data. And so that's what's really, really important. We're making sure that we have awareness of what's going on in space so that we can make sure that those services are available to the people that need them, whether it's civilian applications or military applications in the Pacific. Just to clarify, only two of the planned or proposed telescopes have any kind of laser capability. One is for ranging and that's a relatively low-power laser that tells you how far something is away. As I kind of talked about in the meeting, it's, it's like, you know, some police applications use radar, laser to check how fast cars are moving. We're doing a very, very similar thing but with satellites in orbit. So you can tell where it is because when a thing is in orbit, if you know where it is and how fast it's moving, you know where it's gonna be. And so that's really what we're trying to do. So one, one of the systems would have that kind of laser capability to enhance that awareness. And then the other would be a laser communications. And so this is kind of, it's actually how fiber optics work, but just over a medium of the air. You know, instead of fiber optics sending laser signals through cables or optical fibers, which is exactly how many things work, probably this camera. Every bit of fiber that you have now in your house for computers and internet, you just use a signal that passes through the air. So it's called laser communications and it allows for higher bandwidth. It allows for a much tighter signal so that you're not spreading that signal much wider. So it's a lot easier to direct that signal where you want it to go. And so increases bandwidth and all of those kind of benefits that has lasers. The downside to laser is it's an optical system and so you need visibility. Hence, being up above the clouds is something that's really important. If you're gonna depend solely on lasers for your communication, you need to be above the clouds because clouds obviously stop light, which everyone knows that intuitively. And that is really why the laser comm system needs a lot of sites to be able to maintain that connection. Correct. So these are not, these are not laser weapons. These are, these are, it's a, it's a ranging device and then also a communications device. And so, yes, there are lasers that are projecting amplified light, but it is not at high enough power for that to be a damaging effect. And, and once again, even when we use lasers that could be damaging to aircraft, we completely clear the area and we're watching and very watchful of what aircraft are in the area and we shut the laser off. We have many safeties in place to shut the laser off and not. Okay, so the information for the EIS is all getting catalogued. That's the online comments, all of the written comments are being consolidated and then they'll be, they'll all be consolidated and then responded to as part of the process that was laid out. With the draft EIS coming next, there'll be a chance for the public to respond to the draft EIS and then the final and a record of decision. And so all of that will, will take place over the next handful of months to years.